Hello? Oh, there we go. Okay, we're back from recess. Ready to continue with the meeting. So I think the next item was the presentation.
Thank you. Zasan, there we go. Thank you Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, school board members, community members, for your patience as we get organized for this. Schultz, Schultz, I don't know. It's after 10:00 PM. It's after 10:00 PM. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna hear about that tomorrow. Okay. The next thing. Tell me what kind of coffee you want, I'll take care of it. So Randy Smazl, Director of Teaching and Learning. I'm joined here in our conversation with Katie Mahoney, our principal over at Highlands Elementary, Andy Beaton, our principal at the high school, Chris Holden, our principal at Normandale, Sean Dudley, our principal at Valley View, and Karen Bergman, our principal at Countryside Elementary. So thank you for being here this evening. We are going to talk about a little bit of the current reality and how we're meeting the needs of advanced learners at each of the levels. We're also gonna talk a little bit about our thoughts about the impact of proposed policy 601. So in terms of the district summary, which I'll start with, I'm gonna review a little bit of information about our curriculum review cycle and a little bit of how that works. Some of our estimates of the cost of proposed changes, an estimated timeline, or what maybe that potentially would look like. And then also try to articulate some of the uncertainties we have about the proposed changes in policy 601, in terms of the design expectations and what substantively different means, what is intended in terms of teacher qualifications and certification, staffing, teacher prep load. And then some of our principals will speak to the impacts that they perceive at elementary, middle school, and high school. So part of what we're trying to do is answer the question, what would be the impact of these changes in our programming? So I'm gonna start with impact considerations around curriculum. So when we develop curriculum for courses, whether it's a new course or a deeply redesigned course, we start out with a model for costing. So we look at how many units are typical for a course, so it might be 10 units across the year. Typically, we allow for four hours of development time per unit. Typically, we would have a teacher team working on it rather than a teacher in isolation. Times or rate of pay would be approximately $4,000. Or if we were able to do the work through releasing teachers via substitutes, then that is significantly less expensive. Oftentimes, if we are designing a new course or redeveloping a course and that course needs textbooks or needs materials, $110 or so per book is a pretty good estimate. If we were to estimate a third of students in a particular grade level taking a particular course, that cost would be around $23,000. But of course, other equipment and materials as curriculum gets developed, sometimes those are other additional expenses. For example, a different kind of science course might require some science equipment that we don't use in a regular course, and so that particular equipment might have some expense to it, obviously. And then we have a category of professional development, so we typically would do professional development on the curricular resources and on the materials that were purchased. And then we also do assessment development, so we're building common summative assessments and sometimes common formative assessments as part of the process so that we have some guarantees for the curriculum in terms of what's delivered regardless of which teacher, what school. And that all is a work in progress, but those are common elements that we had put in place when we were developing curriculum. In terms of how that fleshes out then, when we looked at the proposed policy changes, we saw that there were a number of classes at the middle school, so I count one in language arts, two in science, and two in social studies that were asked to be developed by next fall. So that's five classes at middle school. And I think with the last discussion on policy 601, precalculus was removed from that list. And so that leaves eight courses at the high school level. Now, the, other than language arts nine and 10, the rest of the courses have an enriched course in place. And so there are some questions that we have about honors versus enriched and the board's intention on how that policy differentiates those two. If we go to the next slide then and multiply that out, so five courses at the middle school level, taking into consideration some of those other factors, we think around $160,000 we would begin to put together a budget for. And then in terms of high school, instead of nine courses, we'll make that now eight, and so $256,000. Certainly, courses that don't need textbooks, print materials would be less. If print materials were available digitally or through an open source or free medium, that would certainly be less. Certainly, courses like science that need equipment might have more substantial costs to them, and that would need to be considered as well. So then one of the things that we thought about would be, okay, well, you know, if we assume a certain amount of cost, where would those dollars come from? And I felt like there were a couple of different approaches that could be taken around that. Option one would be to pause current curriculum development work and redirect those resources to this particular project to implement the changes in policy 601. So I think that that would be an option. Another option could be to secure new budget for this particular project and approve the necessary budget reductions or balancing that would need to go along with that in spring of 2020, because as all of you know, our school district doesn't get additional funds. We are always operating within the funds that we are given. So if we were to pause, what would that mean? So just to make the board aware of that prior to your final discussion and decision about this. So current projects that we're working on this year include K-12 art curricular review. We're in year two of that work. And part of the end of this study will be to buy materials and buy supplies and equipment for the art program and the art teachers. We're also in year two of the K-12 music study. And so one of the big outcomes of the music study is we buy new music that meets the needs and principles of design that were set out by the committee. We're also in year one of the K-12 science study, which we've shared before with the board. Because of the number of courses listed in the policy regarding science, we feel like we would have to continue the science study at the secondary level, because we wouldn't redesign the courses and then do the science study and then redesign them again a year later. So we'd probably wanna continue that. But at the elementary level, we would probably have to pause that implementation again if we were going with option one. In terms of the impact of that then, it just kind of pushes these other studies back a year. So in 2021, we're looking at K-12 science in year two and 612 language arts in year one, so we would push that back a year. In 2122, language arts would be in year two and social studies would be in year one. So again, we'd consider pushing that back as well. In terms of other curricular projects that might need to come under consideration, one of the things that we are dealing with as a district is Minnesota Department of Education is moving curricular cycles, academic standards review cycles rather, to a 10-year cycle from what has typically been a seven-year cycle. And part of what we are doing an analysis of right now is finding those areas where we have gaps, where we've adopted materials and resources on a seven-year plan, but now we're finding that as the state has redefined some of these standards review cycles, that there might be a gap of three years with some of our content areas. For example, in grade eight social studies, we saw that there was a gap where our digital subscriptions to online textbooks ran out. And so to fill that three-year gap before those standards are reviewed and put into place, we had to extend that to make it really now what is a 10-year adoption, and that cost was $35,000. We know that next fall, APUS history has some digital subscriptions for online textbooks at a price of about $25,000. There's a few other of these that we're trying to find and figure out which of these areas have a little bit of a gap based on this new curricular review cycle, but that's some ongoing work that we're doing in our department. Another area of consideration is we've been working through the language arts implementation for multiple years. We started with Phase One, where we brought in being a writer, making meaning and being a reader, resources in curriculum, and training with staff. Then we moved to Phase Two, where we bought resources for classroom libraries across the district. Phase Three, the Benchmark Assessment System, has been funded primarily by the middle or the elementary schools, both from school budgets and I believe PTO funds. And we're still continuing to work on incorporating the Benchmark Assessment System and doing training with staff around that. And then Phase Four was intended to be additional materials for small group reading materials. And we just haven't been able to get to Phase Four yet to add those materials, but that would be another consideration of impact toward cost. And then in terms of some other areas, we've had conversations, so I apologize for the little bit of overlap there, that should say early childhood curriculum. So one of the things that we've talked with our folks downstairs about is making sure we have curriculum that's aligned with the elementary program, and there's a desire to take a look at early childhood curriculum downstairs. And then we have other things that kind of, you know, weren't necessarily in the long-term plan, but we realized that there were some areas of higher need and some areas of needed responsiveness. And so we've looked at things like Sunde Essentials and implementing that in all K-2 classrooms. And that was a relatively recent adventure that we've been working on, and I think we have all of our K-2 teachers trained or pretty close to all of them being trained at this point. But one of the elements of that is to also do follow-up coaching in the classroom. And so there are things that come up at times that weren't necessarily in the long-term plan, but we feel like, you know, we need to redirect and be responsive to some of the needs that are emerging. And so that's just another example of things that we would have to, you know, figure out how to navigate, I guess. In terms of a timeline, you know, one of the things that we talked about is just this lack of clarity around what does substantially different mean, because that's mentioned in the policy about these courses being substantially different from the regular course. And so we're making an assumption that there would have to be some kind of framework that would be developed to articulate what does substantially different mean. Part of the challenges in honor courses is that they're not, or regular, or I'm sorry, enriched courses, is that they're not necessarily substantially different. They're different in some ways, in some unique ways, but because they're still addressing the same standards as the regular course, the key design of them is that they will extend those standards. They might have a little bit faster pacing, they might have some more time, they might have 10, maybe 15% new or different curricular experiences, but the bulk of those classes are the same because you're still addressing the same standards. So part of the challenge of the design is that it doesn't really lend itself to substantially different as we're thinking about, because you're still addressing the same standards in there. So a framework would have to be designed around that. We're assuming that we would have to bring a teacher team together to do that, so it works in all the content areas, because we wouldn't go out and redesign the courses without some kind of framework around it so that we make sure we get a design that meets the expectations in the policy. And then we would bring that back probably in January and have some kind of framework for the board to approve prior to doing that design. We would also have to develop a number of course descriptions rapidly, because those would go into the registration guide. We wouldn't be able to speak to the entire course, but we would just have a general description of what we think that would be about. And then between February and May, we would need to bring teacher teams together to develop those courses, so 13 courses, not 14. And so somewhere between probably 28 and 38 teachers would be involved with that work, and we're estimating 10 to 12 sub-days per person, depending upon the framework, again, and what substantially different means. But what those teacher teams would do is they would develop units, they would select or they would create a rubric for identifying materials and be able to select materials. Then they would review materials, and typically we pilot those materials. So we run materials in classrooms for a little while to get feedback from students and staff about what's working, what's resonating for kids. Then we would select those materials, write rationale, present that to the board for purchase. We'd need to order those materials and develop our common assessments, and that would have to be done by May. And then in August, in the workshop week, would be your time when we would offer professional learning and training. One of the other questions that was presented to our small group is how do we know that students are growing as individuals and what are some of the ways that we're tracking that? I think we did speak to some of it in the World's Best Workforce Report, but we do have internal measures that we use, including teacher formative assessments, teacher course summative assessments. We do intervention monitoring, so we're monitoring student progress. We have teams in each of the buildings that are monitoring the learning progress of all of our students and checking in and adapting and modifying what we need to do as students are learning or not learning at a rate that we need. We also use grades at the secondary level to monitor progress. Externally, we use things like MAP tests to measure growth, and we use MCA performance year after year, looking at cohort growth. Some community members spoke to this slide previously about how students fall out, and so I'm sharing this as data when we talk about growth. And we look at the five bars on the right. The five bars on the right represent about 85% of the student population, so we could say about 85% of the student population grades two through eight, on the 2019 MAP reading test, met or exceeded their projected growth targets, which is phenomenal, to have 85% hitting the growth targets or exceeding the growth targets, again, in reading, grades two through eight. About 15% are not meeting the expected growth targets. So what this, in terms of how learners are growing, this is showing where learners are not growing as fast as other learners in the system in terms of reading in grades two through eight, as indicated by the 2019 MAP reading test. And then on the next slide, it's a little bit, it's quite a bit less. We have about 52% in those far-right bars. Still, we have that blue whale, as Donna described earlier, rather than a bell curve in terms of data distribution, and about 48% not quite meeting expected growth targets. So in terms of need, in terms of where we see additional energy, we see that, you know, these are some areas that as a system, as administrators and teachers, we realize that there's some additional energy that's needed for the system. We have proposed in a work session a K-12 talent development framework that has four pathways. There was some reference to that in policy 601, but we believe that there's still some, maybe some clarity that's needed around what we intended in terms of the design of those pathways. So enrichment is really about critical thinking and creative problem solving, and we see enrichment as something that should be embedded in all classes for all students. And it's not that it's not, we just wanna continue to grow that and raise that to another level. Everybody up here, and our teachers in this district, support having rigorous learning environments for kids. And part of what we set out with the talent development framework is to articulate how we can maximize that in ways that we're not currently doing it. So growing enrichment opportunities for kids. Extended learning is where I'd categorize honors types of classes, because those really provide an opportunity to provide an extension to standards, not different standards, but an extension to the standards that students are supposed to meet per the Minnesota Academic Standards requirement. Earned honors at the high school is another delivery method. That's not a separate course, but it's another delivery method that we are testing out regarding how to extend the learning for students. The third one, accelerated learning, is one of those areas that at the secondary level, few districts across the country truly have accelerated programming. An example of that that we are piloting is the compacted science in the middle school. And the research is really clear about the benefits of acceleration. And there are many, there are some districts, as we went out and studied course design frameworks in other districts, there are some districts that have gone this way. And so what this does is this provides opportunities, students who are learning at advanced rates, this provides those students an opportunity to compact the time it takes to learn a curriculum so they can open up an entirely new course choice. We feel like this idea has a lot of merit, it's supported by the research, and this would be a great way to explore how we could meet the needs of advanced learners differently than what Edina is currently doing. So as an example, if we accelerate, if we compact the science in middle school and accelerate those students are completing middle school science curriculum in two years instead of three, and it opens up an entirely different choice for them in that third year. And then on the backend, in high school, if they finish one of the requirements in ninth grade, it opens up an entirely different course. That is substantially different than maybe the honors design. And we just wanted to be really clear about presenting that. Another pathway for us to grow in all of our courses that will help meet the needs of advanced learners and other learners is authentic learning opportunities, where students have an opportunity to apply their skills and knowledge to new and novel situations, whether they're solving a community-based problem, or they are engineering a new design for something that they're trying to solve. Whatever that is, the more we can have them apply learning to real-world application opportunities, the better that learning is going to stick with them. So we believe that the proposed policy, as it's written, does not enforce or reinforce all of these pathways, that it really has a focus on one. And we think that there are some limitations to that focus on one, because it's just too narrow in its design or in its definition. And so we feel like that may reduce the ability to offer compacted or accelerated courses at the secondary level, and we'll talk more about that in just a few minutes. In terms of the impact on qualifications, I think we had a clarification in the last policy update that middle school and high school would not be counted as areas where it would be required for GT certification, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I thought I read in the last update. And so if we look at elementary, we have five advanced academics teachers that have a GT certification. We have eight that do not currently. So we did look at some costs of programs to get GT certification, and generally, they're nine to 12 months to complete those programs, at a cost of about $4,300, $4,400, so that was taken from Hamlin University. But there are certainly other programs that wouldn't have to be Hamlin. So we estimate the cost for those credentials would be about $35,000. So one of our questions was, you know, is that, if this is directed, is this something that the district would pay for? Would teachers have to pay for this? And if so, by when would they need to complete it? Because even if they entered into a program, and they're typically nine to 12 months, they would not have time enough to finish that program by next fall, thereby we would not be able to meet that specific specification in the policy as it is written. And with that, that was a lot of fast talking. I'm trying to go quick, because it's after 10 o'clock, and I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Holden to speak a little bit about elementary.
Thanks, Randy. So all of our elementary schools offer advanced learning opportunities. Programming includes young scholars, advanced academics math, and advanced academics reading. Young Scholars is designed to increase access to and representation in advanced classes for students that are historically underrepresented in these classes. Ideally, students in Young Scholars would matriculate to advanced academics reading and math. Advanced academics math and reading build on the grade level standards and reach beyond them. Students access these classes based on a portfolio of evidence, including MAP scores, teacher input, and classroom performance. In-class differentiation occurs primarily in math and reading at the elementary level. And then finally, there are other opportunities for enrichment at the elementary level that include Math Olympiads, junior grade books, et cetera. These are typically offered in partnership with community ed, PTOs, and the individual building's resources. So Karen Bergman, Katie Mahoney, and I worked on these slides about a week ago, and since we submitted the slides for the presentation, the policy has been revised, so some of the bullet points are no longer pertinent. I'll talk about those that are. First of all, I'm still unclear if we, if elementary teachers working in advanced academics will need gifted licensure. If they do, then there will be some professional development and some advanced coursework that they'll need to participate in. Additionally, some of the other financial considerations, depending on how policy 601 is implemented, there may be some impact on the current language arts and math curriculum if they're deemed insufficiently rigorous, if we need to redevelop that curriculum. As a side note, both the math and the language arts curriculum were recently revamped in both advanced math and advanced reading. Scheduling considerations, if we adhere strictly to the language of the policy and consider that pullout and separate classes need to be offered, some of our buildings may have trouble scheduling that. And if they were to schedule it, it may, there may be a staffing impact in terms of dollars needed. And then finally, if we, if in fact gifted licensure is needed for these advanced academics classes, I know in my building I have two part-time staff members currently filling those roles. I love the job they're doing. I'm not sure if they're interested in going back to school to get their gifted license to continue to do that work. Student considerations, I think with the revised policy, the language stipulates that we'd be offering advanced math in grades three through five, and then advanced reading in grades four and five. So the fragmented day probably is less applicable under the revised policy than the policy that we saw and responded to.
Chair Wallen-Friedman and Superintendent Schultz. It is after 10:30, but I did get the name right, so we're happy about that. And it's a little past my bedtime, but we're gonna go with it anyway.
[inaudible]
All right. Well played. So I was charged, Tim Anderson and I were charged with looking at the impact of middle school program design for 601, and we realized that there's a lot. And so I will try to fly through some of these ideas. Not all of them are still pertinent, because there's some revisions in the policy after we actually submitted the slides. So currently, the current reality with middle school program design is that students have access to enrichment through classes, through level classes at each grade level. They vary in terms of what they are, from advanced academics reading to compacted science to enriched classes. They do basically follow the same standards, although with compacted it is different, because it's a couple of years' worth of standards in one year. We also have enrichment opportunities by virtue of the fact that our schedule allows for eight different scheduling choices for kids. And that is really an eight-period day, over two days, gives kids 16 options, semester options in a year. And when compared with, for instance, a six-period day or seven-period day, kids have more access to choice by virtue of that, and they are allowed to choose things outside of academics to enrich themselves and explore, which is integral to the middle school philosophy. The other part is that through our pathway work that we're working in middle school on, and having flex time and providing opportunity and access to different kinds of enrichments, enhancements, and extensions, students can choose to be with a peer group or choose to seek out those extensions with the flex time opportunities that both middle schools offer. Impact considerations, again, we looked at the cost of what it would be to have gifted teachers be certified in the middle school and with including some possible costs of hourly wages to attend the classes, actual curriculum writing, different things. Our numbers suggest that it could be upwards of $400,000 at the middle school level, which is an equivalent of four FTEs. Let me look at that. Some other impact decisions and design questions we have. And this gets into some of the nitty-gritty of scheduling, and I have scheduled and don't wanna get like all sorts of like, you know, jargon-y here, but let me see if I can break it down for you. The more, the more options you have tied in your schedule to a schedule framework, that's really good. So eight options for kids to take classes throughout the day is a really good thing, because it allows 16 semester options in and over the course of a middle school career. That's a lot of different things that kids can take. That's 48 different things in a semester. But having the options available within a course framework is a little trickier, because then you're really parsing that out and making more permutations for students to go through in their, in their day. And so generally speaking, schedule option's good, we want a lot of those. Course options harder, because when you have a system where there's a finite number of courses, of when kids can take the courses, who can teach the courses, how many minutes the courses can be, and a finite number of teachers who might be able to do that licensure-wise, you create more permutations with choice than might be available finite-wise. So the more pathways you offer within a course for kids to choose, it creates more schedule variability. And that more schedule variability- And that more schedule variability at some point will mean that some kids won't get what they want because there's just a lot of ways to do it. Let me, let me draw you another picture. Let's say that you had a room full of furniture, and in that room full of furniture, you have desks and lamps, and you have tables, and they're all connected together. They're all connected together. So, you are told, well, I want you to take a lamp out of that room. When you take the lamp out of the room, you just can't take the lamp out of the room. The lamp comes out with the chairs, some of the tables, and some of the desks. When we add more options within a course-taking piece, adding honors, adding enrich, adding compacting, what happens is we put more furniture in the room, we tie it all together, and we make it harder for us to remove one single thing and actually make the schedule work because all of it is so complex and tied to one another. You can't just plop one in and expect the schedule will work the same. It won't. At some point, when you get so many permutations, the number of conflicts will arise. So, the furniture in the room is the best analogy I can give you without actually sitting down with you in scheduling. It's harder to resolve conflicts when you have increased variability because there's not as many places where you can do it. It also raises an idea that we would be at greater risk of having uneven teams, D-team classes, what we call in the business, bad numbers. So, if 45 kids want a class in honors, language arts, and there are 300 kids in the grade level, then 45 can't be one class. It has to be two classes, which leaves bigger classes in everything else or more staffing that's hired to cover and make the classes of regular class size. So, there's going to be less options to balance classes. When you have more variability, balancing becomes more difficult. And that impacts the entire program. Singletons and unbalanced class rosters will be more common. It will put stress on all classes and class sizes and staffing because there is a finite number of staffing FTEs that we are allocated. And if the staffing allocation goes to creating more sections to accommodate one subject area, then that means something else can't run because of it. And so, there would be some choices that to be made on that. With all this said, the impact considerations of middle school would be really moving away from the design of a middle school, which is all about relationship and having a teaming model to becoming more of a disjointed system, more like a junior high. And in a middle school, it's responsive to a student's needs at that time in their life and to put our arms around kids and support them in a way that makes sense socially, emotionally, and academically. And to have so many different pathways would leave students disconnected from teams and teacher teams. And although kids may not notice it, teachers certainly will because they will be less able to support them in a teaming manner. It would become more difficult. And the relationship-building mechanisms and the authentic connection inherent to middle school would be, would be lost. It would be harder to keep, let's say that. And then, finally, just the cost and staffing stress on other areas and other electives. As I said, I don't believe this can be done in a cost-neutral way because you have more likelihood of having those bad numbers of which we speak. And when we have so many different variability options and those bad numbers, you're really left with a choice of do you want to tell some kids they don't get the class? Do you want to run some classes with much higher numbers so that you can run two sections of the bad numbers? Or do you want to add staffing? And if you add staffing under a finite pot of money, then something else won't be offered. And other schools nearby that do this, they, they have really abandoned a middle school model and gone with more of a six-period day, which is certainly a more cost-effective way to run it. But that simply means that students will be making forced choices between either being in a world language or having band, having honors class, or having project lead the way. So, there's forced choices that go along with having some of those things. And I think it's just good to think about the furniture in the room. And once you have all that furniture all connected together, it's hard to remove and add and have pathways that work for kids seamlessly.
Okay, Superintendent Schultz, Members of Board is on. Test? Great. Do I have the authority to declare tomorrow an e-learning day at this point? I don't have that authority. Randy does.
Well, I'm at Schwartz.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to visit about this policy tonight. I think first up, I just want to make sure I am very open and transparent about the high school. Our teachers, the principal of the high school is very supportive of advanced and accelerated academic pathways for our students at the high school. Okay? I think that discussion is more about how we get there and what that looks like. So, I think that's really the discussion that we're adding tonight. The other thing, too, is, you know, coming off of National Merit a number of hours ago, just looking at really high-achieving, high-performing students, I think we had over 40 commended and semifinalist students, so amazing kids that have had an outstanding opportunity at Edina High School. So, you know, some numbers here. This year, we had the highest ACT composite in Minnesota for non-charter public schools. There's two schools, two charter schools, that have less than 70 kids that had higher ACT composites than us. But other than that, we're number one, number-one college prep high school in Minnesota, recognized, number-one for sending students to elite colleges, clearly number-one for high school sports in Minnesota. I apologize, but we're number-two in STEM education, recognized. For Newsweek, we're working on it. In Minnesota, over 40 AP college and the schools project lead the way courses and enrich courses offered. We gave over 2,500 AP exams, about 85%, or over 85% proficiency. We've got about half of our students are involved in music choir band ensembles or theater ensembles. If you haven't gone to Matilda, amazing. Best robotics team in the state of Minnesota, some new partnerships with the Rotary about global competencies, and on and on. And, you know, and our seniors, too, on their survey, 95% of our last two classes said that they were prepared for the next level, which is really affirming, I think, for our staff. And then, I was really excited this year, I was talking to our college and career counselors. As of November 1st, we had over 85% of our students that have already applied to college for next year and on by November 1st, which is awesome. So, I, I think it's just important to know, like, we are always a work in progress and we can always get better, but kids go to an incredible high school in Edina. So, it's, it's an amazing place. Okay, next slide. Some things just directly tied to the specific language here in 601 as proposed. You heard from our science teachers tonight, teachers that teach standard biology, enriched biology, and AP biology. Those are all available. And in some of the courses that are proposed in 601, it's really kind of redundant. There's really not much of a change that is there because we currently have enriched level courses in math, science, English, social studies, world language, engineering, fine arts. So, it really will not have much of an impact. So, I think if this is really about English, that's another, that's another discussion. But in terms of every other subject area, those pieces are already there. Question about pre-calculus, how we've done math acceleration is kids that are above level, one-year accelerated, two-year accelerated, they are already getting advanced or accelerated level of study. It is potentially in a heterogeneous by grade level in a classroom, but really adding an honors track in pre-calculus because it ends up being the same standards, which just only adds to some of the scheduling conflicts that Sean was talking about. Some things, some highlights. You know, English, 2012 was the time that they detract English, whatever your opinion is about that. But we are in the middle of a pilot related to earned honors within the 10th-grade class. So, this is all students that are taught both grade level and above-grade level standards in the class, and they're graded A through F based on their proficiency on grade-level standards. But they're recognized and potentially can earn honors for the course by showing and demonstrating proficiency of above-grade level standards. Now, so far, within our two assessments that we've done this year, because we're just getting started, the teachers are informing, we've got about 50% of our students that are reaching that honors level standard, which is a higher percentage than typically just do honors or enriched enrollment just by registration. So, if you look at those numbers, if that trend continues, and we have a number of students that earn honors in 10th grade, we will be recommending at least those students continue on and take advanced placement in 11th grade, which will increase our AP enrollment in English in the junior year. So, we're hoping those trends will continue. One of the things we're talking about, kind of tied to this, about the research, is that we are looking at compacted options. One of them, we're excited about what's happening in science and the opportunity for kids to accelerate. And there's been some preliminary discussions about compacting potentially in English language arts. So, again, the idea is not just a separate class with the same standards, but a truly class for accelerated learners to be able to get through more standards in a more compacted amount of time to be able to further their study going forward. And so, obviously, going forward with this policy proposal, I think will derail some of that conversation. We'll continue to use tiering and acceleration we do right now in enriched and AP. But there's some pretty substantial research about tracking, and just the more levels that you have, the more it has an impact on segregation of students by race, by special ed, by EL. So, typically, the more tracks that you have, the more you have those separations, and ultimately, sometimes are denying students access to grade-level curriculum over time. And we are working on, as a school, getting all of our EL and our special ed kids access to grade-level mainstream curriculum and helping provide the supports within the course so they can stay on track. You can see from the data that we had from World's Best Workforce, district-wide data pointing to a need to address achievement gaps by race, second language, and special education. That's some of the investment that we're doing at the high school in terms of professional development, of trying to close some of those gaps. And again, it's really, really important, if you want this to work and Policy 601, you need to include the people that are going to implement this policy. So, again, the high school principal and the teachers at the high school are very supportive of accelerated, advanced-level pathways. But I think a conversation is warranted about what that looks like going forward in 601. So, thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Just a couple of final items. We have some remaining key questions. One of them is, what student data do you anticipate will change as a result of this policy change? Something we're curious about. What is the rationale proposing the redevelopment of 13, 14 secondary courses outside of a budgeted curriculum review cycle? Because we lay out the curriculum review cycle across multiple years, and then we budget and organize around that. What would the framework for substantially different be? Is it important to know how well the current enriched course model is working in terms of access and who's accessing the model as it is? Will there be an associated investment early learners, preparing them for accessing these advanced learning experiences? Will staff be required to obtain pay for qualifications and certification? How will this increase in separate course offerings impact staff and staffing? And are we clear about that? And how would the timeline for implementation impact the system? And just as an example, we know that as we head into the spring, you know, substitute teachers are always a challenge in just filling those roles. And oftentimes, we have meetings where we don't have enough subs, and they get called back to the building, and then the meeting has to, it's not really very effective, and so that happens at times. The other element that happens is we know that the more we pull teachers out, the more detrimental that is to the quality of the experience in that classroom because our best opportunity is with their classroom teacher. So, we try to minimize those teacher subs pullouts during the year, but that would, that would definitely be a consideration as part of the proposed policy. And so, I think John read some of this at the beginning, and as Andy mentioned, I think there are ideas and ways to talk about this, but what we're asking for is a collaborative effort to really look at what are the needs we're trying to make, and then collaboratively figure out how can we make them in a way that administration feels is implementable. And at this time, we'll pause and just ask if you have any questions in terms of the presentation we prepared for you this evening.
Just go back to the slide. It's different than what's in our report. One more. Thank you. Some of those points weren't in on topic.
There any questions here? So, Andy, I just want to be clear on what you said about the embedded honors. So, you used the term 50% of students. So, are 50% of students attempting to obtain an honors designation, or are 50% achieving the honors designation?
According to the pre-AP ten teachers, on the first two assessments of the year, 50% achieved the honors designation on the first two assessments.
I still didn't quite understand because when we saw the report, there was a distinction. There was a number of students attempting, and then percent of them who succeeded. And when you look at the number who attempted and succeeded, it was, it was very small, like 1% of the grade. And so, this would be a major departure from that, or, you know, a telephone game.
Yeah, I think what it was is that last year, when you had that formal data that came to you, it was before we actually even called it earned honors. You know, it was basically expert writing standards, and our kids didn't attempt it in the same way. We were much more transparent in communicating with families and kids, the opportunity and the framework of exactly what you would need to do to earn honors in the class. So, I'm just saying, on the first two assessments this year, one was related to a reading comprehension standard tied to The Odyssey, which they read, read first, and then the second was a paper and another exam that had earned honor standards in there. And so, according to the pre-AP 10 teachers, about 50% of the kids on those first two assessments hit the standard. So, doesn't mean that's what will be at the end of the semester, but so far preliminarily, it looks good that a number of students are attempting and, and meeting the benchmark. And so, some kids are doing it without extra help. Some kids are attending the extra flex sessions that our teachers are offering. So, it's just, the signs are good right now, so I'm pleased.
What, what did they have to do to earn, to get the earned honors, this 50%?
So, that with each assessment, they have some different standards. There's three standards that they have first semester, and there's three different standards second semester. So, to reach honors and earned honors for the semester, they have to hit each standard twice during the term. So, they, they might earn honors by, you know, they hit this first standard here on assessment one, but they didn't on assessment two, but they did on assessment three. So, standard one would have been hit during the semester. So, the, I'm trying to, off the top of my head, I know that one of them is basically an advanced placement, reading comprehension standard, and one is tied to writing. Again, it's across disciplines that they have. So, basically, they're introduced and taught all of these things that we typically would ask for an 11th and 12th grader to be able to do in an English language arts course. So, they're all taught this. 100% of our kids practice and are taught these things. It's embedded within the course. It's not like a separate piece, but that if they meet that standard on the assessment, then they get recognized for honors. And if they earn enough honors designation over the course of the semester, they will earn honors in the course.
Ken, I had two questions regarding the impact of the middle school model. And one is regarding the rationale behind we alternate having students do honors in social studies and science because I know that we take a year off between, and it's my understanding, and I'm hoping you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that we actually specifically set it up that way so students could have an honors experience in one of those categories one year, in a different category, an alternating year, and then go back. So, then they could be more experiential in other areas. So, they would get a flavor of what the honors felt like without it being too stressful. Is that correct? I just want to get more understanding about why it is set up that way.
Yes, that is correct. And that, that really would, you know, play well, and if you put it in the context of the middle school model with kids being able to explore and find what their passion is and, and really branch out and experience a lot of different things, that would really be a way to do it for students and an intentional in its design.
Okay. And then, my second question is my understanding, one of the key differences between the middle school model and a junior high model is that the middle schools, you can basically build a school within a school. And so, for example, my daughter is on a specific team, and I can't for the life of me remember the team name, but she's in a team, and so, her team rotates with the equalizer. And so her team rotates with the exact same students, to the exact same classes. And one of the benefits of that model is it makes the large school feel smaller. And then the other benefit is that the teachers can collaborate together. So they're seeing the same students, and it increases collaboration for the teachers. Is that, and one of my concerns, and I'm just wanted to make sure that I'm, it, the middle school model, quite frankly, is a little complex to me. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm, have correct, that one of my concerns is that would we be abandoning this? And would it affect our teachers' ability to collaborate, to understand the students that they have in the middle school, and for the students themselves to feel like they're part of a smaller group within the school themselves?
So yes. So right now, there is about 356 graders at Valley View, and they're divided between two teams, really, really, two and a half teams, because we have an extended fringe team sort of floating out there that hooks into another team. So, and that's complicated, but we won't go there on that. So being connected to a team for a student means that they will move with those students to the core classes. And because of virtue of, in sixth grade, there's more core classes, they actually, there's six of them, and they move with the same sorts of kids. Once they get to FIAD and choir and band and orchestra, those things are D-team, because then they get to see another group of students. And so part of the rationale for doing that is it's about relationship building and about knowing your kids, because we know that that is one of the, when kids feel safe, and they feel welcomed, and they feel like they belong, they will perform better. And so it's the art of middle school as much as it is the science of middle school. So having kids feel like they belong someplace in this transition year is important. And so when we have teachers teaching multiple different preps of a combo platter of honors, enriched, compacted, any or all of the above, and teaching those multiple preps, it creates different pathways for their teaching, for when they teach. And then it allows for more of the cross-teamed classes, because it's uneven numbers. An example this year is that we have three sections of compacted science in sixth grade. So Mr. Ron Hauddy teaches one section on the team he's on, and Ms. Matlock teaches a section on the team she's on. But because we have an uneven number, one of Mr. Ron Hauddy's compacted classes has to be cross-teamed. So kids who are in that class aren't associated with his team or him, but they have him. And to balance that off, we have to have a regular science class on Ms. Matlock's team cross-teamed, so that there's really only four out of the six science classes in each of those classes, only eight of the 12 possibilities that are actually teamed. And so that's, we're losing one-third of the teaming mechanism in some ways on that. So that does create a barrier to students transitioning and students feeling like they belong. And that's, we built a model, and there's great research on why students need that kind of model.
Thank you.
Hi. I want to thank you all for coming. It's 5:00 after 11:00, and I really, really appreciate that you're here. I'm, I am still baffled why you have not been invited to the policy committee meetings. We've actually delayed a month in order to get more information. And it is not a school board member's role to invite district administration and teachers to our policy meetings. I would really have loved to have talked to you all and the teachers about this policy. I actually wanted to bring it up much earlier in August. No, it was September, it was the August 12 board meeting where there was, pathways was discussed. And the AP, pre-AP 10 teachers were there at that same meeting. It would have been the perfect time to clarify some of these things. Unfortunately, because you have not talked with us, there are inaccuracies in your slide presentation. And we were not able to make those kind of clarifications in the policy when we were writing them. And it would have been very helpful. For example, in the elementary school, the policy was written, and we had no intention of changing what is currently being offered in elementary school. So if what is written is not what is being done, and we are not offering three, third grade and fourth grade opportunities in advanced learning, there, there's-
I think the latest revision represents what we're viewing at elementary school.
Super.
But the version that we saw did not represent what we're viewing.
Right, right. So there are, there were things like that that should be changed, that were changed prior to your slideshow, and that have gotten out in the community, which is misinformation on both the intent, either the intent or what was actually in the policy. And it is quite frustrating, particularly the, what is being discussed with the fact that we would not be interested in what you are telling us this evening, which is not the case at all. I respect you all a great deal, and the teachers in our community. So this is a very frustrating situation for me, especially, it just seems that every step of the way, as we approach trying to meet the promises that were made by this board in 2017 to the gifted and talented community, there are stone walls being put up, truly, even this evening, where at the nth hour, we are being told, no, there's some new legal opinion on this policy. I actually, that it is so consistent in the difficulty that we're getting in order to get it on an agenda, in order to have you discuss it, in order to have an open dialogue. In 2017, the district approved, the board approved pathways. So I'm just going to ask Randy, it was a recommendation.
GT, you mean?
GT, the GT recommendations. One of the recommendations said acceleration. And the wording on the acceleration was for, let me find it. Find, sorry, it's really late. Provide opportunity for mastery of grade level content and beyond at a date, at a pace and depth appropriate. Wait, let me read this slowly. Provide opportunity for mastery of grade level content and beyond at a pace and depth appropriate to the capacity of the K-12 learner. So I am just wondering where that, how, I'm just kind of curious, because that has morphed into many different iterations, including the one that you just spoke to this evening. And I can kind of, I have a couple of the other slides where it has changed. In my mind, 601 was addressing exactly this. Acceleration, provide opportunity for mastery of grade level content and beyond at a pace and depth appropriate to the capacity of the K-12 learner. So I'd like to, I would like to hear from Randy why either, I'd like to just speak to, these are courses that would be in this acceleration, in my mind. And I'm just talking secondary, because I have just said, the policy really wasn't to change what was going on in elementary. It was to maintain what was going on in the elementary.
So I think part of our challenge is how we're defining different words. So when we looked at, when we look at the term acceleration, and we talked about that with the, some different committees, we talked about it with the teachers, we were defining acceleration as when students are experiencing different standards. And so in looking at that particular term, that has a different definition than maybe how you're thinking about acceleration in terms of honors classes. I wouldn't look at an honors class and put it in the category of acceleration, because they're really, in an honors class or enriched class, they're really spending most of the time on the same standards. But you might be extending those standards, you might be adding to those standards. But the core design or construct of that type of class is not really acceleration. Acceleration might, like advanced placement, would fall into the category of acceleration, because instead of a regular level course, students are now working in different standards. So in terms of the GT recommendations, what we did is we went out and looked at, how are other districts designing courses? And we brought back to the school board a presentation on secondary course designs. And we had studied courses around the metro, we had studied courses nationally, and looked at what are the different types of designs people are using to meet the needs of advanced learners. And one of the things that we kind of uncovered at that time were these things, were these compacted or telescoped or accelerated courses. So we came back to the board with a proposal to look at a compacted type of course design inside of secondary. And we looked at this idea of earned honors as another way of delivering honors competencies at the secondary level. So we brought back to the board two different designs to test out and to pilot, the compacted science at middle school, and then the accelerate, or the earned honors at high school. One of those truly is an accelerated opportunity, and one of those is an extended learning opportunity in terms of how we're defining it in the pathways document. And so I think how we are collectively talking about words and what, how we're defining it is really important in the conversation, because I think sometimes we're, we might be saying the same things, but it's a disconnect. But how we're defining acceleration is a little bit different than maybe how you were describing it.
I'm just, I'm using your words when I, I mean, acceleration's been described three different ways recently, from slides from your department. So it is a little confusing. But I actually am just trying to figure out, if I look at the curriculum development that is on the slides, I don't see any curriculum development costs for acceleration.
Because what we would be typically doing is we would, you know, once the talent development framework is approved by the board, then the way we would implement that is through the curricular review cycle. So let's say that science is up for curricular review. What we would examine are all the ways that we are providing enrichment in science K-12. We would also look at all the ways we're providing extended learning experiences in science K-12, where we're providing acceleration opportunities in science K-12, and where we're providing authentic learning opportunities in science K-12. So what we would do is we would build out the budget and the design. Once those curricular content areas are up for review, then we would apply that talent development framework to that curricular content area. So we would be building the budget out with that design as we get to those study areas.
Okay, so-
Can I just ask a point of information, quick? The recommendations that you were referring to, Randy, are those the ones that were presented to us on October 29, 2018?
Yeah. And we did get feedback from the board. We've continued to process that with teachers. We got some feedback from the gifted advisory committee. And so some of that has continued to evolve and clarify in terms of specific articulated language. So some of it, you know, as you're describing, Ellen, might be, this is an evolution to try to get really crisp and clear on the design. And my words in the slide tonight were to be, to try to be really clear about our current thinking about how these four pathways might play out in a content area, and what would distinguish them from each other.
So, and I'm trying to get back to honoring the process that started five years ago, and that was to be completed in a three-year process in February, which was that there would be additional opportunities for those students that are ready for more. And so I'm just, from what I'm hearing is that there is no plan at the moment for any additional accelerated options for those students ready for more until, for another three, two, five years.
I don't think that's accurate. What I'm saying is that we would apply that framework, and this would be, I believe, year three of the implementation. What I'm saying is that we would apply the framework that we created as the mechanism for how we would continue to grow the ways in which we're meeting those needs in each of the content areas. But the way we would implement the framework, from a budget standpoint, would be with each curricular content area review, we would then put that framework into that review process. And that's what we would be accountable back to the board around, are all the ways we're enriching, accelerating, extending, et cetera, with that.
Right. So, but that's the pace, unless you have something that you're, science is starting year one, right?
So science is a little bit ahead of the schedule, because we were trying to start with piloting the idea of trying compacted classes at the middle, or at the secondary level. So we kind of jump-started science as one of the areas, or one of the ways that we could begin to apply that framework. But another way that we're also trying that out is through the earned honors at the high school level. And those were the two main course designs that we wanted to test out.
So, and that leads to the other question. At one of our more recent board meetings, when pathways was discussed, there was consensus among the board that the wording for the fact that the board wanted to maintain our enriched classes in the middle school. And we wanted that wording to be placed into any documents that we're going to be presenting pathways. And that hasn't been done. And I'm just wondering, I mean, the district refused to do that for the district-
I don't think that's an accurate interpretation of what happened. And we've already discussed this in teaching and learning once.
Right. And there was, there was audience in the room when the board discussed it.
It was at a work session, and we can't seek consensus and vote on things in a work session. So I understand that's, I understand that was your interpretation of it. That is not my interpretation of what happened. And I don't think it's fair for you to blame our administration for not having wording on a document that you prefer. If you wanted that added, it should have been brought and voted on. I don't think that's fair for you to be bringing that up and then blaming our administrators for that.
I don't think it's as much of blame. I think there's some confusion around the fact that at the, towards the end of that meeting, because there was a great deal of discussion going on around pathways, that there was trying, people were trying to find clarification around, do these pathways lead to changes to what we currently offer? And so I believe there was discussion at the end of the meeting that was around, does this mean anything that we currently have that's called enriched is going to go away? Now, I'm not sure that we said, please add it to the document, but I do think that we had that discussion, and there was a lot of head nodding, yes, 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 nothing's going away. And so I can see where the confusion lies, but again, I don't think it's as much of- it's as much about blame as it is that, that this was discussed, and so there's concern that, that, that may not hold true going forward.
I 100% agree with you. There was a discussion, and there's confusion. I don't necessarily know that there was a clarity that we all agreed that verbiage should be added to everything that says, we all agree that all the classes that we have should be maintained. And that's where I'm frustrated because I think that that's a stretch. And then to sit in a public board meeting that's being televised and say, you did not do what our board mandated you to do, and shame on you, I don't think is fair.
Yeah. So I don't think the board mandated, but I do think we need to continue on tonight's discussion rather than going back to the last discussion. So I, I think I understand, Randy, what Ellen's concern is. And so I guess that if we set up a framework, and let's say it calls for more compacted classes, I, I think that might be preferable. So let's say you've got a curriculum review cycle that, for whatever reason, is seven years out from today. I'm not sure we want to wait seven years. I think that, and while I'm not in favor of doing, like, everything all at once, I think that if we had a plan, a framework that was approved, I would prefer that we looked at adding one per year as an example, in addition to what's within the regular curriculum cycle. Again, provided that it's not the one that's going to happen, a curriculum cycle review the next year. It just, I mean, I, I do tend to agree with what I understand to be Ellen's point, which is, particularly since you said MDE is now going to a 10-year cycle, if it costs another $35,000, then that's a question to the board, which is rather than saying, let's look at it, the curriculum review cycle, come to the board and say, your budget normally, I think, is 400. That's, I think, the ballpark number for curriculum review. Maybe for a few years in a row, we make it 440 so that you can implement the framework in a quicker fashion. And again, I'm not talking about all at once, but again, consistent with the framework, but more speedily.
Yeah.
Can you just clarify what you meant by the one per year?
Oh, so.
I wasn't sure which, what you were to.
So if we're looking at compacted classes, for example, and I don't know when social studies is up, but maybe we decide we want to do a compacted class in social studies, but the review doesn't show up for five more years, maybe what we do is, as a board, we say, is that something that we can implement in two years? And so just kind of sort of pick them off one at a time, which makes it easier to fit, A, within the budget, B, within the teacher's time. And it, it still fits within the framework, but it does sort of advance, I think, more opportunities. And, and that is what I'm interested in, again, on a rolling basis as opposed to a big chunk all at once. So I assume we could do that?
Yeah, absolutely. We're kind of operating, though, within an existing allocated budget. And so we're just presenting, this would be our plan if we're operating in this existing budget. And earlier I tried to share some, some different thinking around how we could either, A, redirect current curriculum projects to accelerate that work, or B, add some additional funds to accelerate that work. But given our current budgetary model that we have, and to operate within that, it really allows us to look at some curricular review areas on a periodic cycle, and then to potentially apply this framework to those curricular areas. But if we want to accelerate that, then it would just be a matter of what might that cost be, and what is our capacity to do that, and what would we need to add in terms of staff to be able to get that done, depending upon how accelerated you're talking.
Right. So I think that it would be helpful to have the framework completed and have basically a current budget schedule, and then say, okay, what are the options in terms of the cost of speeding up that schedule? Because I think that that could work as a middle ground between the draft 601 and waiting X number of years till the curriculum cycle shows up.
Sure.
So it would be handy just to have kind of an out, it's like when I schedule things, I will often look several months out and go, what do I have? Except this time, we're looking at seven years out, or whatever the number of years are.
Yeah, I mean, part of our challenge, to be honest with you, Lenny, is that when the teacher teams come together, there has to be a lot of dialogue and discussion about how the different course designs can work. And in different content areas, the, the design might be a little different. And so you need the teachers to come together to work through, what does that look like? If you're doing a particular course, you're not really building it inside of a structure of a whole content area in terms of continuity and flow. You're kind of saying, we want to just figure out how to do a particular course in an area. So I just, it's, I think it's challenging in terms of process. I think it can be done, but I just think that's a challenging approach.
So I, I understand the challenge when we've, in the past, tried to pull one class out, and then all of a sudden, it doesn't flow six through 12. I, I get that. When it comes to something like embedded honors, which is not going to change the six through 12 continuum, then that's something that, in my mind, is easier to implement. And again, I think we need more data in terms of whether that is effective. In terms of a compacted class, the curriculum isn't being changed, it's just being compacted from three years to two years. And so the only thing it does is it creates a question of, okay, so now how do we handle eighth grade? And so I understand that it raises questions, but there are benefits to asking the question and pursuing that avenue.
Sure.
Can I, point of order, are we still on discussion of this, or are we going to move into the actual motion in the action portion of the agenda?
So I still have questions.
From the actual presentation?
From the presentation.
Okay. That's why I asked, point of order.
I don't know if others have questions, because I kind of interrupted Ellen.
I do. I have a, a quick question for the middle school. In the curriculum costs, looks as if you, you have estimated that a third of the class would, would take one of the honors courses.
That was an estimate that Randy put together. I, I don't know, I don't know the course taking. We didn't know the course taking of the compacted.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems, I mean, that, that seems about right, that if it's offered, then about a third of the students, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. But to me, that is, that's a major statement, too, that there would be that much demand for an honors level course.
Well, that depends as well. Because if you are maintaining enriched classes, because then you'll have kids filtered to enriched, you'll have kids filtered to compacted. I mean, so it depends on what the offer is within, the pathway is within the course, like how many options you have, and that would determine the course taking. And, and frankly, kids wanting it doesn't mean they'll get it if there are so many different options for them to choose. It might air itself and cancel itself out.
The other, one of the other corrections I just wanted to tell Andy, we weren't, we did not intend for you to be rewriting all of the, the courses that are currently being offered. So that's another one that if we had been able to chat, we would have, we would have said, no, this is in there. And in a curriculum review cycle, of course, those courses at that time would, would be, as part of a normal process, be reviewed. So, but we were not saying that for all of those other courses. So there really are seven courses that are part of 601.
Do you mind, Owen? We're always just waiting to jump in. I had a couple of questions, I just, things I wanted to better understand. One was at the elementary level about the advanced academics and the notion of pullouts. My understanding is that five of the six do pullouts and one doesn't. Is that, is that accurate? So you'd take the students who needed that instruction, and they'd be, you know, given that instruction in a different location than a general classroom. Is that correct?
So we, we do both. We do pullout and we do push-in. And the way that the Highlands schedule is with the school within a school with continuous progress, I do not currently have the FTE to support the pullout of all the three, four, and five classes. I don't have the FTE to support that. So we also use our multi-age model for our gifted and talented students as well. So we do both.
And was that, that's only your school, then? The other five don't have the, the both? Is that right?
If I could, go ahead, Katie.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, at Countryside, all of our advanced academics courses for our fourth and fifth graders in reading, language arts, and then math for three, four, five, it is done in a pullout format. However, the configurations of my grade levels looks different because I too have continuous progress or that multi-age model within the building. Katie has almost double what I have in my, in my CP classes. Or I have, I have a quarter of my students, and I think you're about two-thirds at this point. So it, we're doing it, but we're not doing it in an ideal manner, in the fact that I have some multi-age courses that are occurring within advanced academics because of the fact that I have multi-age classrooms in the, in the building. I've, it has also created for us a situation where our, some of our grade levels are overlapping so that we can get it scheduled in, in a day, because our, our staffing levels are not going to accommodate us having a separate pullout class for every grade level.
I would agree with that. And then I just want to add, too, that we find that some, some of the students really need the acceleration and that faster pace. And then quite a few of our students need that, but then they also really like to go deeper and kind of dig deeper into the enrichment. So not always is the acceleration which needs to be in a pullout. The enrichment can really happen with peers in the classroom. And, and then the access to more thinking and more learning can also happen in the classroom. So I think the yes and model here is, is better when we're talking about, especially about students in the elementary and the foundational years.
So does that mean that 601 does require a change at Highlands?
So yes. So there is some issues around scheduling at Highlands with the verbiage in the 601. With all pullouts, with all different resources, that would need to increase staffing at Highlands and most likely Countryside because of our multi-age model.
Countryside to a lesser extent, but yes, that is true for both of our buildings.
And was that something that was updated a couple of years ago, a change in whether it was pullouts or push-ins?
It started in 2017.
So, sorry, Andy, we're getting cuddly here. I usually don't have a problem with speaking up either. So, so it wasn't that it was necessarily changed. So I taught fifth grade. I don't know if all of you know this, but I taught fifth grade at Highlands for two years before I left. And so the gifted and talented, or advanced accelerated courses were happening kind of similar to what Karen is referring to. It's a little bit of an overlap model where there's math and reading, and it's like this constant flow of almost a middle school independent study at times model. And so when I was teaching fifth grade, as well as when I returned as principal, we really looked deeply at how to maximize our teacher support for kids who needed that acceleration and enrichment. And we really just became more transparent about what was actually happening, what our parents wanted, and how we could really meet the needs of students, both with our advanced accelerated teacher, and then also with our classroom teachers supporting each other in that model. So that's, that's what happened in 2017, is just more about the conversation and being transparent about what we actually wanted altogether as a community.
So speaking of talking about being transparent, I, I just wanted to ask, the budget for the high school included reworking, rewriting all the classes that are enriched, but that was not currently enriched. But that was not included in the middle school. And I just wanted to make sure that that was not because you were planning on getting rid of them. And so I just wanted to ask, are you, are there plans currently to eliminate the enriched classes that are currently being taught at the middle schools?
No.
Okay. Or at the high school?
I had a follow-up about that. The class sizes at the middle school, are they relatively similar between, say, social studies seven and enriched social studies seven, or similarly for eighth grade science?
It depends. Every year, it's a different group of kids with different, you know, choices they get to make. And so we do our best to level classes, to balance them out, and so teachers don't have sections that are wildly differential. And so it's, it's part of what we do as schedulers to balance. And so it's hard for me to say, is there wild variation? It depends on the year, it depends on the kids, it depends on the choices. The other piece I just want to make sure everyone understands is that in extended French, our articulation for the extended French program includes that students will have social studies and French. So that is another permutation of schedule that also goes along with honors classes, compacted classes, and enriched classes.
I appreciate that. No, and I think that makes a lot of sense, you know, the year-to-year variation. And it's not a matter of hiring, you know, new teachers everywhere, you're just doing the best you can with the, with the staff and the sections you have, trying to keep them level, trying to make the, the chairs and the lamps, you know, work.
Right. But as budgets gets tighter, for example, Valley View cut two FTEs last year. What that means is that teachers are teaching over multiple grade levels in ways they have never done before. And so to kind of create, for example, our extended French teacher, teaching both seventh and eighth grade, and so creating schedules on two separate days of an A and B day to accommodate things. And there, there would be more of that because you'd have not teachers just teaching across grade levels, teaching across different classes across grade levels, which then creates barriers for them because they might be doing a singleton because they're also the Latin teacher and the reading teacher. And then you have to create the schedules that allow the maximum amount of kids to, to access that. And that's what the computer does. But sometimes we'll get what's called irresolvable error, which means that there is no way for a student to access it because they're offered at the same time.
Right, right. That can't have it all type, end of the day math, as you were saying, the permutations. Sean, one more, just about the books and equipment. I know, right? But are there different textbooks with social studies seven and enriched social studies seven, and different equipment with science aid and enriched science aid?
I mean, I think it depends. I mean, in its current model, no, but I, I, there is more equipment needed. So what's happening in science is that it's the new standards, next-gen standards are coming in. And so it's really requiring a flip of not only materials, but additional materials. And so the sixth graders this year are in earth science, which, which currently the seventh graders are also doing, just a few ticks ahead of them. But they'll be flipping over to life science, which is something that will look different than the current life science iteration in eighth grade. So yes, there will be new materials just because, especially in next-gen standards, we're going to need that. But in terms of enriched and compacted social studies, I don't know, because that would be largely, as teachers look at it and, and work on that framework, I can't, I can't say what it is because I'm not close enough on the ground to what that would be. Right now, they would use similar materials because they're using and working to the same standards. And that, again, would be a question I would have, is that how would they be substantially different in classes if it's the same standards?
And a relevant question, too, because that's 75 cents on the dollar for those types of textbooks.
So I understood that the question about additional book supplies and material supplies is based upon not having a definition of substantially different. And so if that's defined to be, you can use the same textbook, then you wouldn't have additional textbook charge.
Yeah, I think that, that was just one of the items we were trying to present as we're unclear on this definition. And how does this definition affect the design? Because then that would play out on what you would. Because then that would play out on what you would look at for materials or textbooks, et cetera, so.
And so currently you're working on science and you're in year one, and your, your plan is to include 7th grade science course that's, I don't want to put words in your mouth. What, what's, what is your plan currently for that?
I'm sorry, what are you, I'm unclear. In terms of implementing the science standards?
Will there be a separate course?
A separate course in 7th grade or, because right now what we're doing is we're piloting the compacted. And so they're teaching that in 6th grade, and then the students will be moving in the 7th grade, and they'll be completing the rest of their middle school science in 7th grade, and then taking the new 8th grade course.
A new 8th grade course, right?
It'll be a new 8th grade course, yeah.
I think she meant because there's currently an enriched version of the 8th grade science that's leveled, once next generation's implemented, was there an intention to maintain that level even though by then the compacted would have caught up? Is that, that's what I heard.
Well, I think part of the discussion that we need to figure out is what is the impact of running a compacted class and what can we run? And does, would compacted replace the enriched? Would we have compacted and enriched and regular? I don't think we have figured that out yet. Likewise, we haven't figured out exactly what the 8th grade class would be. Because part of what the high school teachers have been discussing is the new standards have a big Earth Science emphasis. And one of our graduation requirements around science is that they, they have to have biology, then they take chemistry or physics and one other science credit. So one of the things that they're looking at is should Earth Science be part of that other one science credit? Not the full, but maybe half. That's one model they're looking at. But that might affect the order in which we order the sciences, which could affect the class that's available in 8th grade. We originally thought that that would be physics. It might still be physics, but we're just not that far yet on the discussion and the design. They're still working through unpacking the new standards and what that looks like.
Right, it might be more of whatever the 9th grade is. I think part of what's going on with this policy is trying to make major changes, like the idea of a leveled 8th grade science disappearing, have to go through the discussion-action process, have to come through the board, so that it's, it's not something that's just done before it's heard of. And I think that's why it generated some confusion. That's why though, that the current list of enriched courses that are in the high school catalog are listed there, so that should you want to say, or I use the word cutting, but you know, no longer offering that at the high school, no longer offering enriched this, enriched that, that has to go through a discussion action. And it wouldn't just be, be done without that. So that's why they're there. Not to imply that it's $32,000 a pop suddenly, but that, you know, they're sort of, it's documented as this is what we're offering, which is strange. I think that's the bigger question is, you know, why is it, you're not finding similar policies elsewhere? But I think there's, it's responding to a worry that these things are going away, and they're gonna go away, and they won't be here much longer. And we had sort of assurances that they're not going away, but now we're hearing, well, you know, leveled science 8th, you have to understand the context, which isn't what we heard a while ago. And I'm not saying that we were misinformed, but that there's, it's constantly a rolling context and a rolling budget. And to put these things here in policy helps make it have to go through the discussion-action process, to have these sorts of major changes in program offering. Likewise, at the elementary school, the whole point initially with documenting this is that we currently have a certain number of advanced academics, and should those be going away, it should go through a discussion-action process. And I remember a few years ago, there was great concern about them going away, and there, that still lingers, not on the 12 to 24-month horizon, of course. Because it's just too much of a turnaround and we would have heard about it. But what about the 36-month horizon? And so just to bring it back board level, and even, you know, valid reasons about CP and it's, you know, these special district-wide draw programs, you know, we try our best to, to keep them running, keep the impact, you know, it's minimal, so it's not like one school is getting more resources to an extent that we can't justify, and in some cases not at all. But then, you know, the change kind of just happens. And would it spread? Would that be now, it went from an isolated logistical need to a pilot program that's spreading? And so documenting it in policy is, is sort of abrupt. It's sort of a bad fit as far as how things typically go. But I think there's frankly a fear that things are on the way out, and there's not much you can do to stop it. And then we hear again tonight, you know, even when there was sort of broad consensus that current enriched classes, nobody's, nobody's asking to get rid of them, nobody's in favor of getting rid of them, and sort of the status quo. And yet that guidance wasn't really, and granted, we don't make decisions at work sessions, but even that consensus fell flat as far as meaning, and that you have to vote if you're gonna have any sort of guidance that sticks. And I know, I know you could go away as quick as a discussion-action cycle, again, bring some, some reasoning, but I think that's, that's a better approach than this constant fear that there's nothing, there's nothing stopping the science from shifting out from other people.
So each fall, we bring to the board a list of course changes or course proposals, unless we've had kind of a freeze or a pause for budgetary reasons or strategic plan reasons, et cetera. But we bring those courses and that design to the board for a discussion. So if we're gonna put in a new course, we bring that to the board. If we're gonna drop a course, we bring it to the board. And so we can go back ever since I've been here eight years ago, where we have a list of, these are, these are the courses we typically drop, these are courses we are testing out in terms of design, these are new courses that we're offering. So I, so maybe there's an example, but I'm not thinking of an example where all of a sudden a course went away and it wasn't a discussion at the board level. Because we tried to bring those courses, even some of the course changes, we bring them to the board, we've been doing that for eight years.
Has this happened? Is there an example anybody can think of, that that's a real concern?
That was brought to the board. Yep.
I, I think some of it, some of the concern that I've heard comes from discussions that have happened at the board, whether at a work session or a board meeting, where comments are made, like I've heard many times, oh, enriched isn't really any different anyway. Or we don't have any intention of changing anything, we only believe in AP and the traditional classroom. So there's mixed messages coming to the public, coming to parents, and so they're trying to figure out, well, what does this mean? And I think what, what Amir was trying to articulate is that he wants to ensure that, that the enriched courses that are currently being offered will continue rather than a thought that they, they may disappear because they're not really that different, or they'll just lower the standards even more to the point where you're signing up for enriched, but it's apparently not really enriched.
Yeah, I, I think the articulation around not that much different than regular was just the expression that in enriched classes, you're still teaching the same standards as in the regular class. So the bulk of it is the same standards, and then there is a percentage of it that is different. And when you talk to teachers who teach the classes, it might be 10% different, it might be 15% different, but it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it substantially different per the language in the policy. So what added confusion for us is what does substantially different mean? Is that drastically different than how we're currently doing enriched? And again, I would just bring it back to, if we're gonna drop a course or change a program, we do bring those conversations to the board. I know that there might be things that might be said in a meeting, or they might be said between staff members, et cetera. And there, sometimes our ideas that are kicked around or pondered, but if we're gonna make a change in what we offer our students in Edina, in terms of courses, we've had a pretty solid process of bringing that to the board, discussion, discussing it, and then the following meeting, having a vote on that in terms of process.
So I just want to note something and then ask one last, hopefully one last question, which is, in terms of this being your first opportunity to come before the board, a number of us have asked for a work session for administrator and teachers to come before the board, and we simply haven't gotten board support for it. So it's not that, because like, for, you look at me like that, but you, everybody wanted to vote on this tonight rather than have this presented as a work session. Part of this was scheduling with all the strategic plan meetings, but I've been pushing along with others to get meetings with this team. So.
I'm not sure that that's totally accurate. I mean, we, this came up, we, it was discussed to be on the September agenda, and we delayed a month to October. And between September and October, that we, there could have been a meeting or something figured out. So I don't think it's 100% fair to say that the board has not supported getting input on this from other stakeholders.
It has not been arranged despite requests. Anyway, here's my question, which is, in terms of the middle school model, can we offer regular, enriched, and compacted and still maintain the middle school model?
Very difficult, just because of the number of permutations that you would have. You'd be in four core courses, adding at Valley View Extended French to the mix as well, you would be increasing the variability threefold.
And, and I know that you're not necessarily an expert on other districts, but I think in the, the presentation, it said Minnetonka does not have a middle school model.
They don't, they have a 6-3 date.
And YZ has a middle school model.
YZ has a middle school model.
And they do not actually have enriched classes in the middle school.
No, and they only offer one world language.
Are there other questions?
Chair Roland Friedman, I would like to respectfully make a motion that action for policy 601 be removed from tonight's board agenda.
Okay, so do you have reasons why? I mean, you've got a motion and a second, so now we're at discussion. So I think that it's reasonable to see, given that we've scheduled it, what's your, why do you want it removed?
Well, I'd like to make it fully clear that I support engaging all of our learners, including our advanced learners, but I feel as a governance board, it's our responsibility before we pass policies that will have lasting impact to our budget, curriculum, and secondary and primary scheduling, that we have a crystal-clear understanding of the following: the fiscal implications of the policy, the legal implications of the policy, the timing of the implementation of the policy, and the broader impacts to the middle school and other schedules. I'm asking my fellow board members to take a more thoughtful approach to this policy and bring it back to a work session and the policy committee, so we can get this right for all of the students in our district. I truly think we can move forward with some of the ideas presented in this policy, acknowledge some of the gaps in our system and fix them, but do it in a strategic way if given the opportunity. I do not think this is the best way to do it, and we will end up with a subpar result.
See, I had a question about the FTE on the cost. I think I heard four, and I know that was with the, the original look at the numbers. Does it, does it affect? Well, no, I still have a question.
Sorry, point of order, but aren't we discussing the motion at hand?
I don't know, but I have a question. I feel like we just kind of abruptly went, and I just don't want to lose them when we...
Well, that is true. It definitely was abruptly changed, but.
Should we? So I can't ask a question at this point?
I was just saying typically if, if a motion is brought, I believe we have to finish that discussion and have that vote.
So I assumed your question pertained to whether you would agree with a postponement.
Well, I'd like to have that conversation as we get towards the item on the agenda, and if you, if you want it, vote it down, you can vote it down. But I don't know that we're, I don't know, I feel like we jumped head to action and we're still on discussion at the meeting.
So I'm not sure we had finished discussion, and then it is an action item already. So it would seem to me that it's more a matter of voting yea or nay.
Right.
Than removing it from the agenda.
So you can bring a motion to table an item that's an action item? I'm not sure that there's a difference.
My motion is to remove it from the agenda, to table it, so we can have further discussion before voting on it.
I guess the question I would have, since Erica is talking about an additional work session, which is, what you presented tonight was based upon a policy draft from a week ago, and then it got revised a couple of days ago. So do you have suggestions on revisions that would create more advanced opportunities, but not necessarily follow everything that's set in the current version?
I think that some of the things that are in the language about an expectation from the board, that from 312, we will provide advanced accelerated opportunities for our students, and through these pathways, enrichment, acceleration, real-world learning, all those things, we should be held accountable for those things if the board is asking for those. I, I guess from my perspective, is we just want to be part of the conversation about what that exactly looks like, and have a stake in that as administrators in our building, and then also the feedback from our teachers, because I think we can get there. And I think this would already have been going forward if it wasn't so prescriptive. And I think that's, that's my perspective. I'd love to be back at the table with this group to talk about how we can meet that expectation, but it just might not be as prescriptive as described, because we might have some different ideas that go further.
Can we resolve the motion so we can get back to some questions too, though?
Sure, but I, to me, whether they had something to add relates to whether I would agree that it should be tabled.
You might want it to stay on the agenda.
Well, if they had nothing to add, then why would I table it? But if they're, if they have things that they could add to it, and that we could come up with a policy that we could vote on, so that, my question was directly related to the motion, that's all. I don't know if anybody else has questions directly related to the pending motion? If not.
I would add that I think, in addition to what Andy said, I think, once we get to clarify intent and purpose and language, we may be able to add more, maybe have a better understanding.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we're gonna vote on the motion to table. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion does not carry. So I, and I'm sorry about your interrupting the discussion. I thought actually that you were done with it, and maybe Erica did too, but.
All right, the FTEs is my question about the budgeting, because I see, I see the costs about curriculum writing as, as being sort of upfront, startup cost, one-time. Whereas FTEs, you know, that's potentially a career's worth of commitment. And so if you look at this as, well, first of all, without the, the enriched science and other high school courses that already exist, so that's already taken this budget estimate and cut it in half. And then you look at that upfront cost as being a one-time, and then these courses exist, and you know, now you have it. What does that do to your comparison to four FTEs? Does that still stand, or how would you, how would you update that?
My, my four FTE was based on the training and the gifted resource certification through Hamlin, and the time the teachers spend with it, and the time that not only spent in class, but spent writing the curriculum. So, and that was to include all four core classes at each middle school with two teacher teams at each grade level. So that's where that came from.
So it's, and that's probably my fault. I met John and Randy and Lenny and Erica a month ago, and we talked about, you know, the GT thing not being necessary. Certification wasn't what it was saying, it was sort of deemed qualified as you currently have, but it, it just acknowledges that you currently have a process at the elementary way for deciding who's qualified and who's not for that particular role. And then at the element, at the middle schools, it was a month ago that we came up with a list of, of edits to the policy. And because there were three of us, we didn't share with anybody until November 4th, but on November 4th, we shared with the board and the public the updates to clarification. And I think the, the 3-5, what did you mean when you say 312? Does that mean that Advanced Academics for Reading goes down to 3rd grade? I think that was a fair interpretation, and no, it's, it wasn't the, the idea we were talking about. And so I went and, you know, agreed a month ago to edit that, and we shared that in the November 4th meeting, and you know, the edits only are just getting to you, and so I think it's hard to kind of swag the FTEs at this point now. So it's a little unfortunate, but I do think that really puts the cost back into context of curriculum writing, more what a typical cost would be. You know, I look at the English 10 class from a year ago... You know, I look at the English 10 class from a year ago or 18 months ago, and that was actually right about $32,000. To rewrite that and to buy all the books, I think it was like 34, 35, if you don't count the consultant who checked in with the focus groups and said how they felt it. So this, you know, a particular course is kind of per third of the students, being budgeted at the same rate as a course that was for an entire grade subject. But even then, I think it's a steal. You look at, you estimate 215, that's a third of sixth graders, of seventh graders, eighth graders, ninth graders, 10th graders opting in, like as soon as the wall is down, they're crossing that border. They're opting right in, and that's that's 13% of our 8500 school district for for the cost of some curriculum development. You won't get more cost efficient. And I just, I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost at the, you know, the four FTE number, or or this talk of, well, now we're not going to make our dyslexia, or that's an option, not make our dyslexia changes. I think those those options need to be thrown right out. You know, we didn't have a guiding change document where you'd normally list the how nots, you know, what do you say, unacceptable means? And I think several of the options that you listed would be under the unacceptable means. So, you know, there is still some confusion, things to be clarified, but it it strikes me that the, you know, the verbal clarification over the course of months just wasn't getting out, and it's not, it's not binding, it's just not binding until we vote. Are these questions, just real quick, are we asking them questions so they can be done and we can discuss, or are we still just litigating our positions? What should we do? You know, I respect you more friends, but these aren't, these aren't questions.
This is why I asked, point of order before, are we?
So I think they were follow up questions to the discussion. That's how I interpreted them. Are there other questions?
Yeah, there was a phrase minimum impact, and I forget where it was.
What was your question? Does it just cost half, and is it 400,000 not real? Because it was more of an interpretation statement.
Yeah, it was about budget. It was about budget. The four FTEs, because that's, you know, say over 10 years, that's 40 FTEs, and that's a very different cost. And I don't think that's what they meant to to estimate this as a cost. But yeah, that's what it was. But it had, I found it, it was a question from the high school program design. In the impact, it's written there that this would have minimal positive impact on learning. You know what I'm referring to? Oh, it's it's.
I think I was saying in that first slide, the fact that we already have enriched and accelerated options and so many things there, you're really not, you're putting into policy something that really will not have much of an impact.
Being just just choice in 9th and 10th grade English. Yeah, which is half their English experience in the high school.
Yeah.
So as far as the impact on English, I I don't mean to quibble with that directly, but does that imply anything about your thoughts on the the other enriched courses? And would getting rid of them have minimal impact on learning, or or you see value in the ones we have?
Nobody's proposing to get rid of any current enriched options.
Correct. But you see what I'm saying? Minimal impact with adding some, does that imply there's minimal impact in removing some, or it doesn't imply that?
Well, where I looked at the policies, you had a number of courses listed that we were going to create honors level courses, and my comment on my presentation is that they already exist essentially there. We already have three levels in science. So if it, that's what I said, if this is just about English, then we should have a conversation about English and not uproot the middle school, you know, the elementary. If it's just a conversation about.
Maybe I should rephrase that. Is it good for students that we have leveled?
Principal Beaton did not suggest that removing all of our honors courses would have minimal impact on the learning.
Well, that's my question. So.
That is not what he was implying.
Is it, does it provide more than minimal impact that we offer leveled science in 9th, 10th, and 11th grade?
I would say the, if you ask me just personally, philosophy, I would say that enriched classes that are the same standards typically, that are a little bit faster, deeper, and so on, do not have a super high leverage point. Acceleration has a very high leverage point for gifted learners. When we're talking about a compacted class where you do two years in one for a truly gifted accelerator, that has a, that's a high leverage impact strategy, the research points to that. There is minimal impact for a tracked class, a leveled class, like an enriched class versus a standard class. Most of that benefit goes to the upper level, not to those that are left in the in the lower level, just historically. And that's what I said, the more levels that you have, the more you have an impact on stratification within your student population. So, and again, nobody's proposing to get rid of our current enriched classes, but as the the policy was written, it spoke specifically about those courses, and that's why I was addressing it. So.
I think I understand a better, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, can I get a motion to approve policy 607 and 608?
Not until C.
I got a a motion, can I get a second? Hello?
Second.
All right. I'm here, any changes since the last month when the were, these were before us on discussion?
No, these are policies that have to do with with administering the 504 plans and working with IEPs and and our intervention work. And so we we talked last time about the works that are ongoing. The policy is is updated and corrected, but not necessarily the be all and all of some of those changes that are underway. But it does represent some of the, I guess, the clarifications around relevant laws and some of the restrictions and prompts around those changes. In particular, the the Disabilities Education Improvement Act of 2004.
These are the two round.
IEPs and 504s.
Correct.
Yep.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor of approving policy 607 and 608, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve revised policy 601? I believe that's the motion you want, correct? There's just, there isn't one of my notes here. It says to be determined by school board, so, but I think you are looking for a motion to approve revised policy 601.
So moved.
Second. So I don't know if you need to make a presentation on it unless you've got something different to say than what we've talked about tonight so far.
Well, sure, because I think there hasn't really been a rundown. We did a rundown a month ago, but just the general idea. Elementary schools are largely held as status quo, but it does refer to pullouts, which have gone away in a couple of ways, a couple of places. It maintains what we have for some leveled options, for example, 7th grade in social studies, 8th grade in science, and it introduces seven new courses, leveled courses, and that's 9th and 10th grade language arts, which is currently one class for all 9th graders and then another single class for all 10th graders. And then at the middle school level, five additional courses, where you've got 8th grade social studies, 7th grade science, and in 6th grade, the language arts and social studies and the science. Yeah, so.
Are we all agreed on what's in there?
So those are the additions and other things that are listed. Reference some of the ongoing work. For example, the K-12 talent development framework, what's listed in the policy is that curriculum would contain elements of them. Then it lists out what's what's relevant in the K-12 talent development, and then what elements mean would be subject to the development of the course, which the board isn't undergoing. They're sort of saying that these courses are to be developed, which lends itself to an implementation timeline. And I think some of the questions that we've heard earlier and and tonight have a lot to do with the implementation timeline. So when they say, well, what is, what are you, what are you thinking? What's different enough? What's not different enough? I don't think it's a place of of sentences in policy to start to specify, what do you mean when you say different in 7th grade for social studies versus 8th grade, I'm sorry, 7th grade for science versus 8th grade for social studies? So that would be an ongoing conversation. I think that's what the the administration and the board had said earlier, that there would be an ongoing touch points to clarify some of those points. But the major, the major questions would only be decided on a vote. They wouldn't be decided through any sort of broad conversation. And those questions are, say, for the 215 students in 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, and 10th grade, who we anticipate opting in, which is a good estimate, because you look at where we offer choices, and that's what we see. 7th grade, social studies that's enriched, we see a third of the students there. And 8th grade, so it's, it's a good estimate. And that's huge. That's of of those five grade levels, it's a third of the kids that would be impacting for, I think the updated cost, depending on what you think of books, 50 to 200,000. The books are the big cost, that's 75% of the dollar. So if we don't have different books, and we didn't really get an answer, if we don't have different books currently in 7th grade social studies enriched versus not, then really what you're different, what's different between the classes is what's so hard for a teacher to do otherwise, and that is differentiate the pace, to say that we are going to be, we're going to be doing this unit, we're going to be doing that unit, we're going to do the third one, and that we've got this this rapid fire pace, who's up for it? And also performance expectations, what is it that you think is is A-level work? That is so hard to look in the same classroom and say, I've got a different idea for an A for you than you. And if you don't differentiate that, what's really to incentivize the student to opt in to so much more effort to reach their full potential on a day to day basis? When they're in the class, they've got an A, what more can you say? What are people going to ask about at home? How's school going? I've got an A. You know, what, they're not going to be able to prompt you day to day, but at the time of registration, you can really say, what course is the best fit for you and your growth? You know, and I appreciate this idea of that people should be able to explore something. In fact, I think that's my point, that if you explore it in middle school where there aren't as many consequences, you try it and you like it, why is it gone the next year? And if you explore it in middle school and it doesn't go well, then, fine, you don't have to opt into the enriched science, the honor science, when you're in high school, and colleges are going to want to see those grades. And if you tell students, well, you have to consider enriched social studies in 7th grade because otherwise it's not offered, I think that's a shame, because you don't, you don't have that choice for the fit. You know, wouldn't, what if a student wanted to try something in different order? What if their interest in science was was found earlier, and then it was not nurtured? It just strikes me as as inconsistent. And you know, something we haven't mentioned much is is the resident enrollment, and how that was about plus 36 kids over, if you look over 10 years, kind of the year to year, the first jump, it was about, it averages out, a little, sometimes more, sometimes less, but it's about 36 more. But then we got the report from Hazel Reinhardt, which shows the first year acknowledged a major dip, and we weren't really quite sure what to make of that, neither was the demographer sort of saying, keep your eye on it. And the next year, it got a little deep, a little deeper, you know, it's not even leveling out. And what's the cost of that? And some of those students, as far as the the dollars the school gets, have been, you know, that that loss financially has been offset by open enrollment, but not all, not even close to all. And if you look, so we've lost 322 over two years, and if you look at that compared to the plus 72 we should have been at, and that's a huge, huge change in resident enrollment. And I think that's just so important to keep an eye on. I think it should be on the board's dashboard when we get one. You know, and I know we're developing a dashboard, but what do people think of our schools locally? Are they opting in or opting out? And it's been 15% for the longest time, now it's 20% resident kids that have opted out. And it just, it strikes me as a point of concern that that isn't on a five to seven year timeline. It's so much, so much more important than that type of timeline to make sure that people in your community are opting into your school. And this isn't the only problem. There are other concerns, and some of them are being addressed, some of them are about to be addressed. But what's so different with this one is how frowned upon these ideas are, and how difficult it is to to get any traction with them. You know, and we keep referring to that study's release date about about what's going to be appropriate and accelerated enough for students to reach their capacity. But, you know, think about how long that study ran and the time people were asking for it before it ran. And this is, this is so many years in the making. I don't, I don't at all want anybody to get the impression that it's year one, and boy, aren't they hungry for year one? It's not year one. It only feels like year one because we sort of constantly find ourselves resetting the timeline, just like with some other things in the old strategic plan, the the dashboard, the idea of a dashboard. There was a board before us that had that idea, and it just, there's some difficulties with it. First of all, we couldn't even decide, how do you know when students are growing? How do you measure that? What what metrics do you value? And these, these are intractable questions in the profession, and I wouldn't want them to hold up small steps that are incredibly cost efficient, especially when you look at at some of the questions that we have lingering about this, they go back as far as you can go in a school district, and they ask, what are what are students' needs? And how do you meet those needs? And how are we doing? Those are the the highest in the sky level of looking at these questions. This is zoomed in, $50,000 to $200,000 startup cost for a third of your 6th through 10th population, perhaps more, because 6th grade offers so many. I bet you'd have more than a third of students in 6th grade saying, yeah, I tried my hand at an honors course.
I have some questions for the board, but first, I would like to make a point of clarification in that numerous board members have referenced students leaving our district and enrollment studies, and as well, members of the audience, and people have sent us emails talking about the fact that gifted and talented and rigor were some of the top reasons people have mentioned in leaving our district, and that is actually not correct information. And I want to clarify for the public what the correct information is. We did a 2018 study by Morris Leatherman. It's the only statistically accurate, yep, you can shake your head, but it's the only statistically accurate study that we have. The number one, two, and three reasons that people said they were leaving our school district were meeting learning needs, personal attention by teachers, and focus on character development. Gifted and talented and more challenging coursework were the number 11 and 13 reasons that people mentioned. And I want to say that they actually weren't even mentioned at all as a reason when they weren't prompted. So they weren't even mentioned as a top reason when they weren't prompted. I'm not saying that it's not something we need to focus on as a school district, but we need to understand what the data is actually telling us. And I don't, I think it does a disservice to our community to pretend that this is one of the number one people, reasons people are leaving when it's actually not. And then it's disingenuous to say that if we have some of these programs, that it's going to be a windfall from a financial perspective, because the data does not show that. When people were prompted as to what is the most important factor in you leaving Edina Public Schools, 17% said gifted and talented programs, which means 70% of respondents said it was not a priority for them. 70% of respondents, more challenging coursework, 66% of respondents said this is not a priority for me. I want it to go on record what the data is saying. It wasn't the number one, two reason people are saying they're leaving our school district.
Erica, I I'm not sure where you, I'm looking at the results here.
Are you looking at Morris Leather?
Yes, I'm looking at Morris.
We might want to clarify Morris Leatherman versus what we got two weeks ago.
I'm looking at Morris Leatherman's results. And and that's not what I'm seeing.
The 2018 survey?
Yes. Number one reason for sending some child somewhere else is specific program.
Specific program need for going to other public schools, better behavior, personalized education.
Right.
Correct. And on that, nowhere is listed, gifted and talented at all.
Right.
But then if you scroll down to most important factor in decision, gifted and talented is has 17. And then if you look at the disaggregated data from that chart, it says people rated it a one, two, three, or four. 70% of people said that is not important to me in my reason for leaving.
Right. But there aren't, there aren't any other, okay, so I I'm looking at programs on this, most important factor in decision. So there's a gifted and talented programs listed.
I don't know where you're looking.
And then there's language immersion programs and special ed program. So when people are leaving, the the number one list. So when people are leaving, the, the number-one listed as programs is gifted and talented.
I actually don't know where you're looking.
I'm looking at page, oh, there's no pages. It's the most important factor in decision. But meeting learning needs is the most important factor.
You are correct. Of the programs listed, gifted and talented is the number-one. It's also the, about 20th of the reasons.
But 15% or 17% in 2018, and then the only other study we have, which is not scientific, which is 24%.
But where I take exception is you pull out that one data point, and you say 13% of respondents said this was the most infected, important factor leading, for leaving. You don't say that it's number 15, and 70% of people said personal attention by teachers, 67% said meeting learning needs, 62% said focus on character development, 61% said traditional moral values.
60, I'm sorry, now you, you have to tell me where you're finding.
I'm on slide four. So it's fine to say that it was a factor, but you have to couch it in where was it listed and what are people telling us? It was not even close to being one of the most important factors.
Okay, so here's, here's, here's my point with, with this. Of, this was a strategic initiative. When the board started talking, when the policy committee was responding to a, a strategic initiative, where we said, our, I, I can only speak for myself. I included this as a strategic, in this, into the strategic plan, core courses in this, honors courses in the secondary core, because I felt that there was some urgency to meeting the needs of advanced learners.
And I've strictly accurate data, so there's not anything to agree or disagree.
I heard Ellen refer to your specific data, but she was saying the specific program, and the reason for sending child number-one specific program, as in Navigator or?
Yes.
We don't know what the specific program is.
Right, so that's what, so you're saying you're looking at, at data, and I'm saying, I think we need to talk more to our stakeholders, our students, and their families. And the students and their families that came and spoke to us this evening had something to say that I listened to very clearly, that I, I would like to find out more about why, about what they're feeling. And, and so I feel very strongly, there may be many people who are very happy with our programs, and I hope that there are, and I know that there are, but I would also like to find out from our community, especially the gifted and talented community that, that make up so much a part of, of our population, as to whether or not their needs are being met.
I think that is an outstanding idea, and I would love to do that and build an outstanding gifted and talented policy off of that information.
Yes, so would I. And I feel strongly, and I still see teachers here, that they need to be a part of the conversation.
But we're voting on a policy tonight.
Right. And, and I will tell you why I would be voting on a policy tonight, and that is because this has been a Sisyphean effort to get this in front of the board. And so I'm just, I, I, I realize that if we vote on this tonight, and if it is approved, it will come right back to the board very quickly at the beginning of the year.
So you're voting on a policy that you don't think is the best policy, just 'cause you wanna get it passed?
No. I'm getting it not, you got the wrong reason. I would be voting on this policy just so that we will have a very transparent conversation and make sure that all of the people that are involved will listen.
So you're voting on the policy to have a transparent conversation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Erica. Am I here? No, the lines first. Here, can I use your? Oh, I'll check if the base is on. Okay, basically. There you go, there you go.
Okay, how am I doing? All right. Erica, I think you and I have, we have shared desires for the benefit of the district, the, but I think we're interpreting the exit of the gifted and talented a little bit differently. I'm recalling administration gave us on October 24th, an exit survey. It wasn't scientific, it was as good as they could give to us, but 25% of the residents who were leaving Edina cited the lack of, or for them, substandard gifted and talented, 25%. I did a little math on, on that, and we have, at that same meeting, we were told 150 resident and, uh, students left the district this past year, in one year. And you take 150 by, and multiply that by 25%, you're at 37 and a half students. You multiply 37 and a half students by $8,500, which is about how much the state gives us for students, and we're at $318,000. So we've talked quite a bit about the cost, but the revenue's a real thing. And yes, we can pick at the fact that this wasn't scientific, the N wasn't real big, but that's the best we got. And I'm working with that, and it seems to me, as I recall from Morris Leatherman, that one could interpret also those results as being similar to that. So I wanna have this on the public record, on the camera too, that we recently heard that 25%, 24%, .24 of our resident students were leaving because of gifted and talented reasons.
So how many is that? Is that like, wasn't that eight or nine people?
Indeed, that's what I'm saying. The N was not, but that's the best the administration gives, and we get asked for more, more specific information. We had asked for individuals to be asked upon their exit, and so we could get nailed down, get the count exactly, but that didn't happen. So we're working with what we have.
I wanna make a very.
Okay, and we can sit and continue to argue about what the numbers tell us about exiting enrollment, and actually, we're throwing around all kinds of numbers. And the bottom line is, we've asked for this information, I asked for it last December. As I recall, Erica, you didn't think we needed it because we had Morris Leatherman, so this is data that we've been clamoring for forever so that we can understand why we would lose resident students. We were at 8,500 students once, and if you look at the numbers that are in our packet tonight, now we're at 8,319. So we're clearly going the wrong direction. But as to the why, I'd like more detailed information on that as well. We are hearing, and it did show up at least in this survey, and it showed up in the other one as well. But we've also heard from families who are leaving for the other reason, for dyslexia, for lack of meeting needs on the lower end. And those are all issues that we have to address. I have been on this board for almost eight years, and we have talked about these classes, about the gap at the middle school with the social studies and the science. We have talked about language arts nine and 10 forever. This policy didn't come out of the blue. It's just that when I hear people saying that we're supposed to be working together, that we're, we're supposed to get input and feedback, we have gotten a lot of feedback and input, and it has been displayed tonight of how hard the pushback is on this. This is not a give-and-take and let's work together. This is constantly being told, "No, no, no, no." I mean, we had this discussion about language arts 10, what, two years ago, a year ago, and, and minimal change was made, and we were just told, "Absolutely not. We are not adding a different course." And all that I believe that this policy was set out to do was to offer choice for kids. That's it. And I'm, and, and when I hear things like, "It's just about people wanting to pass some policy," and that it's about us, it's so not about us. This is about the kids. This is about offering choice. And we've been arguing about pre-AP 910. We've had students come in front of us and share their experiences and say how, when they're told to go around the system, to opt out, to test out, to go online, they feel lonely. They're not with their peers. So I'm looking at all of the information. I'm reading articles and studies about how we're pitting students against each other and referring to our gifted students as these bad, horrible elitists. And this is going on in our community. When I hear tonight that we will not have dyslexia services because of 601, which really, depending on how it lands, is five to seven classes, I find it very hard to believe that suddenly dyslexia services are gonna be gone, because this is what we're doing. We're pitting parents against parents. We're bullying parents. We're bullying parents who show up to give their opinion that may be different than other parents. All parents care about their individual student, and that student can be super-high special needs, dyslexia, middle-of-the-road, or high, high-achieving students who want to grow every year and have their needs met. We have talked about the, the language arts class that's been in place since the fall of 2012. I have yet to see data that proves to me that that has worked out for our kids. And every time we've asked for it, whether it's AP stats or other things, we don't get that information. Then, when we talk about ACT, and we like to quote that apparently hardly any kids, like 17% of kids are getting tutors, the question actually is, "Did you use an academic tutor during your senior year?" Well, you get your AC tutoring usually in your junior year. So again, let's be honest about when we're throwing out facts and figures about what we're talking about. As for the cost, when it's not these costs that we've talked about tonight, I, to me, again, it's just, people seem to like this word this fall, fear-mongering. I think we're fear-mongering. We're scaring parents that you're not gonna get your, your classes, we're gonna stop all of the development going on in our other courses, or the other curriculum cycles. That's, it's just not the case. I have so much more belief in this district and the teachers and the community. If we set our minds to something, we can do it. And all I hear is roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, which I would tell my own kid, "Figure it out. Quit telling me about that, that this is a zero-sum game, and that if this one gets, this one isn't gonna get. We're better than that." And calling parents out and saying that if you want this, you want segregation? And that you're elitist because you want your kids to be challenged? It, it makes no sense. All we're saying is choice, choice in a handful of classes, and one that we've been fighting forever. This is not new. And as for the enrollment, we can sit and pick through all those numbers, but it is clear that we are losing students. The whys, like I said, I would like to better understand that. But some is gifted and talented or lack of advanced academics, and some is because we're not serving our dyslexia kids, or whatever other needs were, needs we're not meeting. We need to do this work. And when I hear admins say that we have not asked for their opinion, they have not been a part of this, and I look back at you, at the policy committee asking for this policy to be discussed, since June at a minimum, how have you not had a chance to weigh in? I, to, to put that on the policy committee and claim that they didn't want any input, or that they weren't, that nobody was asked to come to the table, just, it's disingenuous at best. They have been asking. As we've been discussing strat plan, we have talked about different needs, and we have talked about stress. But again, I don't believe that stress, and we've had this discussion, that we are here to tell kids that the way to not have stress is, we're gonna tell you what classes you can and can't take, because that's gonna reduce your stress. There are those kids, not mine, who can take five AP classes and be just fine, but it's not for us to say. It's for families to make those choices with their children. And we need to allow families to do that and not say that we're gonna reduce stress because we're gonna dictate the classes that you're taking. We are talking about mental health in the strategic plan, but when we've talked about honors, and even though it got so far through the system, then all of a sudden, at the last minute, again, another roadblock, well, that's not really what we meant, and now it appears that we're slow-walking the strat plan that maybe will come to fruition in January or February, which the intent was for it to be done by the current board that put two years of work into that. So I, this, this is not, this is not new. This has not been without roadblocks, as Amir referred to and Ellen referred to. And, and we can look at the data of the, of the bell curve. Our bell curve is tipped so far to one side, and then if you look at it from the year before, and we wanna talk about growth, and, "Well, all the top kids, they're the only ones growing, that's not fair." Well, they're growing less than they did before, from what MAP data we do have. And again, why are we not focusing? If it's 15% of our kids, absolutely, we should be focusing on that. It's 15% of our kids. But to say that 50% of our kids don't deserve a choice for enrichment, to me, just, it, it makes no sense. And we have tried to overcomplicate this, discuss adult issues that are not kid issues, and this isn't that complicated. We are better than this, and we are more than capable of getting a few extra classes into the system and making it work if we really want to.
So I was gonna say a few things. Three quick things. First, I wanna thank the audience for staying till 12:40 in the morning. I can tell how much everybody cares by being here, so, uh, thank you. I wanna thank the teachers and the administration for staying till very late and providing us with all the information. And the third thing I wanna say before I make a very strong statement is, I really respect my peers and know that everyone that's coming to this board right now is putting in significant time, has mostly charitable activity to really try to help our district. So this will surprise many of you, but I was a gifted and talented student. I recognize we need to challenge all learners to reach their individual potential, and I admit that elements embedded in policy 601 may ultimately be a very good idea. However, as I think back about all the reckless and endangering things I've done, including allowing my young kids to use a waffle iron at a hotel buffet, this is by far the most irresponsible activity with the largest opportunity to damage the future of children's growth that I have ever overseen. I ran for school board in 2017 to improve our financials and to develop a strong and academically excellent strategic plan. In terms of our approach to fiduciary oversight, I have worked with two well-trained finance directors over the last two years who are thoughtful and detail-oriented. We've been fortunate to refinance bonds twice, saving the district and Edina taxpayer millions in the years to come. We have also achieved and maintained the highest credit rating in the state. However, to get there, we have had to make significant cuts each of the last two years, impacting students across every learning level. Having gone through countless hours of budgeting, I cannot conceive of supporting a policy that uniquely directs resources from many to a group without deep study and understanding of the full impact. To repeat, in contrast to some esoteric arguments about pitting student populations against each other, that is not and has never been the intent. Public school is not a capitalistic environment. This is a government-regulated entity with a fixed number of resources. We must, as a measure of our fiduciary responsibility, know what actions we have taken have what consequence. In terms of our strategic plan, we have failed as a group to advance this effort in a reasonable amount of time. We should've brought it to the community administration and teachers a year ago. That failure is shared by the seven of us, and John. However, that doesn't provide a reason to short-circuit the process by jamming in a major decision that will without question pull resources from other children who do not qualify for accelerated courses. Let's look at two hard decisions we've had to make. The first one, for one large decision regarding school start times, we studied the evidence. We looked at peer schools. We spoke to the community. We spoke to teachers. We worked to understand community education impacts through the Teaching and Learning Committee. I personally read over 500 emails and over 200 pages of primary data from the American Pediatric Association and other noted research outfits to understand all the benefits and consequences. I voted in alignment with the international scientific community's evidence and the administration's recommendation. In another case, the administration recommended a seminar class option in the high school for approval last year. This recommendation, akin to policy 601, was not fully cau- In another case, the administration recommended a seminar class option in the high school for approval last year. This recommendation, akin to Policy 601, was not fully costed, data of its impact was not provided, and I promptly voted against it. Was it a good idea? Maybe. Was it presented to a governance board in a way that meets our fiduciary and oversight responsibility? No. The same exists here with Policy 601. Are elements of it positive? Yes. Is it superseding nearly two years of work on a strategic plan that is not yet approved thereby being not appropriate? Yes. Does this board know full well that in 45 days, you will have a new constituency voted in by the majority of the community who does not support this policy as currently stated? Yes. We don't have time to waste related to our children and their futures. We, as importantly, don't have resources to waste. It is a significant violation of our ethical governance and fiduciary responsibility to vote a change that pulls resources from one area to another without understanding the full impact. So if my colleagues, which it looks like, choose to vote this through today, it is also remarkably inappropriate because we know in January, the board won't support this decision. The only reason I'm not more disappointed and frustrated by this Policy 601 process is because I know that for all decisions that are driven by sentiment and not data, by fear and not reality, by soundbites not impact, in January, we will improve. I do not support Policy 601 as currently stated and will work to ensure that we do provide an extremely challenging curriculum based on academic excellence to our highest achievers while balancing and meeting the needs of all of our learners in line with our current resources. Thank you for listening to my position, and regardless of tonight, we will get this right in the short term.
I have a few closing remarks. My intents and purposes for supporting this were to make changes to the district that are much more modest than how they're being interpreted. My intent was to just codify what we have going on in the elementary school, to really not touch it, to add five classes in middle school and to add two classes in the high school, to codify the existence of the five classes, as Amir talked about, so that they would have to come to the board. And so, the costs that I have understood that I would be voting for are much more in line with Amir's rough estimate of $200,000. When I take that into account with what I just talked about, that we are losing students, and from the best information that we have as of this fall, we are set to gain that money back if we retract, if we attract and retain our gifted and talented community that seems to be making an exodus. This would be much closer to cost neutral. This is also, to me, a very strong marketing statement because it says that we are here open for business for gifted and talented services. We have many neighboring communities that have robust gifted and talented that don't seem to be apologizing for it the way that we do at times. Now, not with our AP, but with the enriched and honors. I'm not calling for something that's significantly different. I'm calling for something that is much more similar to what we had before the last strategic plan, that we had in place for many years beforehand, where we had pretty much a robust and unapologetic gifted and talented program. There's been talk that this has some tracking elements to it. I don't really see that because students can get on and off every single year. They're not pegged for the rest of their careers with this. And somehow, this has been associated with the achievement gap. And as we heard from our presenters earlier, much of the achievement gap is dealt with by improving third-grade literacy, getting kids ready for kindergarten, and, we didn't talk about this, but stemming the summer learning loss. You handle those three things, you've got 80% of the achievement gap dealt with. So this is really not affecting the achievement gap that much. Another point is licensure. Our language has been changed, or my interpretation of it was from the get-go, that it was to provide for the district to make the choice for what would constitute a qualified gifted and talented teacher. It did not demand licensure. And licensure would cost a tremendous amount of money. I'm not asking for that. I don't want that. I want the district's own determination and judgment to be made on that. I am very supportive of the idea of voice and choice, giving more choice to our parents and to our students. We talk so much about that, but I tell you that LA 10 class has been a point of contention for a long time, and I would like to see another choice given to our community about that. There's also been some talk that having heterogeneous classes is more research-based. Well, I've dug in a little bit, and I don't intend to get into the research here, but I do want to create the impression that the support, the academic support for gifted and talented is not devoid of substantial academic research. And, for instance, there's a page in Keith in 1996, a little bit old, but from John Hopkins Press, a compendium of the review of major literature of homogeneous and heterogeneous instructions concluded that homogeneous grouping has a positive effect on high-ability students and an even better effect on minority students. And they drew into this study Oaks and Slavin, who are the big names in non-gifted and talented instruction. So they took those folks into account as well. I embrace gifted and talented instruction, and I think it has tremendous effects on the economy and our society as a whole. I have cited this to a number of my fellow board members, but The Economist, March 24th last year, had an article about how to teach gifted children where they use gifted and talented instruction as a proxy for economic success, and they used patents generated by societies and compared those that had more enriched and honors programs, and those societies had more patents, and they also correspondingly had more economic growth. So it's not just a trifling thing. People are just not making this up. This is a fairly well-esteem publication. And it is not a small population that would be addressed by this. As we've heard a couple of times here tonight, 50% of our students, basically, are 80%. We have a whale-shaped tail, whale-shaped distribution curve. We do not have the kind of distribution curve found in other districts. And so I think this accords well, this initiative accords well with the recognition of that So, and I think that this does make good on the commitment made to the gifted and talented community at the end of 2016 or the beginning of 2017. So those are my remarks. Here, five minutes to one.
Thanks, Amir. The only thing I want to add is that, as a board, I think that our actions speak louder than our words, and I wanted to say that I feel it's the epitome of irony that we are contemplating introducing a new mission statement for our district that says our mission is to, quote, "educate each individual to reach their full potential." But as a board, we refuse to better understand the impacts of prioritizing budgetary and human resources of this policy specifically for advanced learners in a vacuum and not part of our broader strategic plan. To say that I'm disappointed in this process or lack of process is an understatement.
Actually, I have a question. So why was pre-calculus dropped from the honors requirement?
So the math program has its own sequencing, and we raised the question about why there was a previous enriched pre-calculus that was dropped and concern about the possibility of somebody early in their high school career who's been precocious in math all along, and someone who's finishing their high school career and needs more time on a given topic being in the same class. And also, the notion that pre-calc is a fork in the road between calc AB and calc BC. But in our conversations with the board and questions about whether that was necessary and just the overall focus on having choice, which the math program inherently has, it didn't quite fit the rest of the logic. It didn't sequence with this notion of everybody's being forced into the same class in those other areas. And so, it's more consistent, it's more rational, it meets the core concern, which is you keep according kids with regard to pace and content and expectations. You say, for example, with Language Arts, seventh grade, you could take an enriched course if you think it'll better meet your needs. An eighth grade likewise, but then not ninth grade, not 10th grade. That's the heart of the concern, and pre-calc didn't get to that heart of the concern. I would also add just, in addition to that heart of the choice, something I don't think that's come up well tonight, and that's, why not just test out of it? Credit by assessment, which is sort of a secret in our district, not literally, but it's under-verbalized in the conversation. I think it's fair to say that credit by assessment isn't widely known as an option. But I also think it's a shame of an option in one very important sense, and that's that you're saying, at the beginning, say, of 10th grade, you are so amazing, just don't even register for 10th grade English, for example, because you are just, you know so much already, when really, I would rather we say, we're going to help grow you to your full potential. You're clearly precocious. How are you able to test out of what we think is a 10th grade class? But let's grow you. We've got amazing teachers and all the resources that goes along with it. And for a one-time $50,000 to $200,000 cost, which is the, the $200,000 is the cost we saw in tonight's report, because once you take out those, once you take out those classes that already exist, their number falls down to about the $220,000, $24,000 range, and 75% of that is a question of do textbooks have to run? Anyway, for the one-time cost, $50,000 to $200,000, you get that choice and you can say, welcome to 10th grade, let's find the best fit for you as we grow you over the next academic year. That's such a beautiful thing, and it's true for the different subjects it's offered, and it's true from sixth grade all the way through 10th grade. And we offer that so many places. We do. It's an amazing opportunity, amazing schools. I'll tell you, I'm not pulling my kids, no matter how this goes, we're going to be here. But it's not consistent, and I think we can get there for a $50,000 to $200,000 upfront investment, and it could in fact, excuse me, in fact, could affect a third of our students any given year. I think, I think much more than that. If you look at those deciles and you look at the number of kids in any given decile, the top two-thirds of decile, which is kind of the population that might be thinking, should I try something more challenging in a subject that I'm passionate about? That represents 94% of our kids. It doesn't reach all of them. We have to do more, we have to do other, we already are, we must continue, we've got to get early reading right. But 94% of our kids should consider, look at the registration, read the course description, talk about it with their family. That's what I want, and that's why I want to vote yes tonight.
Okay, so, I'm just going to make a few comments because it's approaching 1 o'clock. So, I am concerned, and I'm not going to be in favor of this because of a series of reasons. One, of course, is we didn't follow the normal process, and that means we didn't get full input from our teachers, from administrators, and from those that we consider to be our professionals. And I've heard comments about, well, it wasn't the policies committee's job to go seek that out. And actually, I would differ. So when administration comes to the board with a proposal, we expect the administration to line up teachers and professionals to say, here's the basis of their proposal. So I would submit that if the board comes up with a proposal, it's actually the board's obligation to come up with the questions and to request that people come in. So I differ in that particular one. The net effect, though, is that we didn't get that input. And so, part of the issue I have is, we don't know today what we don't know. We do know that there's a policy that's interpreted multiple ways because the words are not defined. You have advanced learners in here, but I didn't see a definition for it. But I saw a capitalized term. That would imply that it's supposed to have a definition. So what does it mean? I don't know. And there are other areas where we can see from the presentation that there's confusion about what the policy says. When it talks about, we're going to have advanced classes in 3 through 12, it doesn't say, as set forth below, it says 3 through 12. And so, there are changes that we could make that would make it cleaner and more understandable. I'm concerned about the data. So, we have data that's given to us that says the high learners are meeting their growth targets and the people at the bottom are not meeting their growth targets. And so, as we know, I'm not pitting one student against another, but you do have to allocate resources, and you've got to say to yourself, so, where are we going to allocate money? And if the $200,000 is the number, that's fine. We still have to decide how we're going to spend the $200,000. And perhaps, as Owen said, we should look at investing that in stemming summer loss. We should start to sit there and say, here are ways that we can address some of the issues that our data does say absolutely exists. And by the way, as I said from my questions, I am in favor of expanding the program that we have, just not in this bulk fashion. Morris Leatherman says, there are a number of reasons why students are leaving. You can't focus on one of several reasons. You've got to focus on all reasons. That's the whole idea of the strat plan, is to try to focus on all reasons and then allocate resources. I am concerned that if we require honors at the middle school level, that will eliminate the middle school model and/or it will eliminate the opportunity to provide compacted classes. And personally, as I look at it, I think a compacted class, which is accelerated learning, the data better supports that for our students than an honors class. In fact, the reason I ask the question about why pre-calculus was dropped is calculus is an accelerated, I mean, math is an accelerated program. And so what's interesting is that in the accelerated program, you're not pushing for an honors class. And so we should be looking and saying, where else should we have accelerated programs? As opposed to where else should we have honors programs? So, these are, and by the way, in terms of, is there broad community support? The reality is, we had people come and speak tonight, there was an email sent out to 250 people asking them to come tonight. Whether that drove people, I don't know. But also, as I door-knocked, people didn't say to me, you need to add honors classes. Now, do I think that we need to add a level of rigor? Yes. I just don't think that this is the way. I would prefer a different way because I think that this is a silo approach. And so, I'm not going to be in favor of this because I think there are better ways to accomplish what I think is your objective. That's all. We just differ on ways of accomplishing the objective. I think we're ready to vote? All those in favor of Policy 601, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion carried. Is there any objection to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned.